Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call the regular city council meeting of the City of Menifee to order. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember August, Councilmember Furman.
Here.
Councilmember Denver.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Here.
And Mayor Mann.
Here.
Thank you.
And it looks like we have Pastor Tony Truax from Hope Christian Church to deliver an invocation tonight. Pastor? Good evening.
Let's bow our heads, shall we? We pray, O Lord, God of heaven, O great and awesome God, you who keep your covenant and grant mercy with those who love you and observe your commandments. We ask, O Lord, that you be attentive and your eyes open, that you may hear our prayer this evening as we ask your blessings upon our city officials this evening. Lord, may you grant them wisdom, watch over them, and lead them with your grace. May our citizens be civil and duly respectful to our officials. Lord, we also take a moment to ask for your comfort to be upon the citizens of the great states of Oklahoma and Colorado. Sustain and comfort those who have suffered loss and are in need. Lord, provide safety for those who are responding in the relief effort, strengthen the citizens, and rebuild their homes and their communities quickly, we pray. And we ask, Lord, that you would watch over our city of Menifee. Make each of our neighborhoods safe and peaceable. May each of us walk in humility, casting no shadow upon one another, but lifting one another up in kindness and brotherly love. Lord, we pray for our businesses. May they be successful and prosperous. We pray for our first responders, that they be kept safe. For our hospitals, our convalescent homes, our schools, our families. Lord, we pray for the military, sons and daughters, moms and dads. Keep watch over all of them. And Father, what we are not make us, what we have not grant us, and what we know not teach us, all to your glory, and in your holy and precious name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Edgerton, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Would you please put your right hand over your heart, follow me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton. We have no proclamations or presentations tonight. May I have a motion on approval of the minutes from May 28th and June 4th, please?
To your majesty.
Okay. Let's go ahead and take the motion, and then the second, and then we can modify. Was there a second?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Mr. Councilmember Furman?
I have a modification on the, on the May 7th.
May, we're dealing with the minutes-
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, June 7th.
June 4th?
Where it was.
We're talk, we're approving minutes from May 28th and June 4th.
I have a change on the June 4th.
Okay.
Can I find it?
June 4th, yes.
Okay, so are we good on the minutes on motion, the second on May 28th?
Well, I was gonna try to take them as a motion together. Should I separate them?
Only because, sir, I'm gonna show you as an abstain on the motion for June 4th 'cause you were not here.
Right, I understand that. Okay, that's a good point. So, if you would, Mr. Denver, modify your motion for an approval of agenda item 6.1 first.
Absolutely.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any changes or modifications? Minutes are approved on to agenda item 6.2, which I have to abstain because I was not here. Deputy Mayor, would you control this particular agenda item, please?
Certainly. We're talking about approval of minutes.
6.1, is that where we are?
Right, 6.2.
6.2, approval of meeting minutes, minutes June 4th. Can we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Do we have any objections?
I have a, I have a correction.
All right. Mr. Furman?
On, on account, on page four, Kathy?
Yes, sir.
There was a question that I had asked the city engineer. I needed the contractor's opinion. If we, if we give him 100 percent closure, can he shorten the construction time? That was a question that I'd asked Mr. Smith, and I would like an answer to that question. Okay? So you have to reflect that in the minutes, that I did ask that question.
On page four, under Council, questions of Staff, Councilmember Furman asking-
That's correct.
-road were fully closed for eight weeks. Would the project be completed in eight instead of 16? Intermanager Johnson suggested most likely not possible. Have Mr., so you want me to change what? I'm sorry.
I had, I had, I had made a question to Jonathan Smith.
Uh-huh.
That I want the contractor's opinion if he can shorten the construction if we give him full closure.
Oh, okay.
That was a question I'd asked, and it wasn't reflected in the minutes.
Contractor's opinion is what needs to be added here.
Contractor's opinion. I get a lot of opinions from staff, but I want the contractor's opinion.
I understand.
Okay.
I'll make those modifications, and if I could ask that you approve the minutes with that modification.
I approve the rest, yes.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes with corrections noted? We have a motion, do we not? And we have a second? Mr. August, our Councilman August seconded it. All right, so ordered. I'm gonna turn this back to Mayor.
Mayor, thank you. On to city clerk, do we have any modifications to this agenda?
Yes, Your Honor, we do. First of all, I would like to ask for a motion to add item 10.12. It is support for American Public Transportation Association Local Transit Coalition grant. RTA has asked us for support. It is typical of us to give support, however, the timeframe is very short. So I would ask that you add it due to the fact that we already posted the regular agenda, and this needs acting on prior to the next agenda. And in the same motion, could I ask for an addition of item 10.13, which should be the CASA resolution to set a public hearing for 7.72 for the annual fees for that. It just sets the public hearing for next time. It was inadvertently left off your agenda. It just simply needs to be set, published, and ready to go for next time.
May I have a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Furman, seconded by Deputy Mayor. Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
I just wanted to mention on the RTA, the Riverside Transit Authority, which I am a director, they do a lot of good work. They do a lot of charitable work. In fact, they've done charitable work for the city of Menifee, and given them some buses. They work very well with our staff. They're just a top-notch organization, and I think the council, and I'm sure the city manager would agree, delighted to be of any support. They've been a great support to us. If we have some needs about how we wanna change whatever it is, bus stops or whatever, they come in here with their people, and they work with our staff. Just top, top, top greats. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that time.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton. Madam Clerk, does this require a roll call vote since we added agenda in during the meeting?
A voice vote would be fine, but a vote on the motion.
Are there any objections? Agenda is modified. On to public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any public commenters tonight?
You do. Mark Wilson?
Good evening. I'm Mark Wilson. I'm a longtime resident of the Quail Valley area of Menifee. I've come here this evening to acknowledge and express my gratitude to Menifee's Lead Code Enforcement Officer, Wayne O'Gara. Officer O'Gara, thank you for a job well done. We have many abandoned and foreclosed properties from all corners of Menifee, an issue the city must find a way to streamline and make more efficient. One such property existed on the street next over from, from us for approximately 18 months. Then the last six to 12 months, this same property has had trespassers in it. Officer O'Gara was able to coordinate the services of Menifee Police, Menifee Code Enforcement, and private contractors to address this issue. So the trespassers were removed by the police. All the trash and debris were removed, and the contractors went to work and boarded up all the doors, windows, and access points. Wayne, thank you. Officer O'Gara has shown me a new perspective on how our code unit works and resolves issues. I appreciate the time Officer O'Gara has spent with me and the community, and his willingness to help me address the many issues our community and in particular, my neighborhood have. In my email sent to many here tonight, I stated that Wayne may get tired of hearing me say it, but I will keep repeating it until he tires of me. But thank you, thank you, thank you. Thanks to O'Gara, we have been able to take back one more block here in my neighborhood. This was the last house in this particular street that needed attention. I know the rest of people who reside on this street must be very happy with the results, Wayne. In the last year, with the help of Wayne O'Gara and the rest of Code Enforcement team, we have also been able to eradicate an abandoned trailer at the top of Quail Valley just off of Getz Road. You're all aware of that one. You've all heard me talk about it many a times. So another success story. It is a long, arduous task to achieve success on these types of projects, but once you actually realize and see the results of everyone's efforts, you know it's all worthwhile, and our city and neighborhoods are better for it. I want to also extend my thanks to the head of code, Colin McNeese. He stays in touch with me all the time. I'd like him to keep up the direction that code is taking. I'd also like to thank Donna Burke. She introduced herself to me here a couple of years, or last year when she came on board, and it kinda reinvigorated me to get myself plugged back into code. And then once again, I wanna thank Wayne O'Gara. Job well done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Wilson. I know how important these matters have been to you, from the transition to the county to now, and the fact that you are now, at this point, with your diligence in the community and staying on top of this. Thank you to you, and we'll keep it up, okay? Thanks. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Grant Yoder's.
Good evening, Grant Yoder's, Community of Sun City. I wanna reflect back to the public comments portion of the last meeting and the parade of speakers addressing the traffic congestion in our city. Each and every speaker questioned why the Holland Road overpass had slipped to last on the priority list as per your guide on Menifee's traffic congestion relief projects. Do you not realize that by doing Holland overpass first would relieve the already congestion at Newport and I-215, and what a positive impact it would have once the Newport and I-215 improvement project gets started? Every candidate at the last November election pledged that the Holland Road overpass would be their first priority. You should've known then about the funding process that was already in place for all of these projects and not mislead the electorate. Once again, so much for campaign pledges. My next subject is Sun City signage. About two and a half months ago, the mayor directed Mr. August to move forward on his project. The city consultant also told Mr. August to go for it. There have been several speakers at the meetings wanting to see it happen, and some offered suggestions. If Caltrans is an obstacle, utilize our consultant. That's why I'm being paid $10,000 a month. We are not boycotting Menifee. We just want to retain our community identity just as Romaland and Quail Valley. Examples: Driving south on I-215, approaching the 74 off-ramp, you will see a freeway sign that says Romaland. After exiting onto 74, heading east, you will see a sign that says Romaland, one mile. Romaland still retains its school district identity as Romaland. Go to Quail Valley, still have Quail Valley Volunteer Fire Department. Village Post Office still has address Quail Valley. Various brown historical signs say Quail Valley. Also, there is a concrete monument sign in front of the fire department on Getz Road which reads Quail Valley, Community of Menifee. What do we have in Sun City? Two little dinky signs after you exit I-215 at McCall located at the stoplight. They are obscured by the larger freeway signs, and at night, you can't even see that they exist because they have no reflective lettering. I'd like to hear from Mr. August in regards to some positive action as opposed to no action. My last comment has to do with the shuttering of the doors of the Californian. Is there any possibility that we can have these notices put in the press enterprise? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yoder's. A brief staff reply. Mr. Johnson, could you briefly talk about all three of those? 'Cause I know, I know you actually have an answer to all, and I want you, I want you to update now.
Thank you, sir. The, starting from last and going to first, the Sun City signage and the monument that we'll be placing in the medians is under development right now. The medians on Cherry Hills Boulevard between Bradley and Sun City is the first phase of the median improvements, and plans and specs are about 95 percent done. We hope to be going out to bid very soon on that project, and that will include the monumentation like what you've seen in, in Quail Valley. Unfortunately for us, the, the project wasn't ready to roll this fiscal year, but next fiscal year, we'll be able to do that. The reason why it's in Quail Valley already is there were those two projects in Quail Valley, the fire station landscape project and the Quail Valley pathway project that were in last year's or actually this year's budget cycle. As far as the I-215 signage with the Romaland, Quail Valley, and Sun City, the community monuments, we have approached Caltrans on that several times, and we haven't got the answer we want. So we're not saying, no, it's not gonna happen. We're just saying, we're trying to work through the process that we have been given. And the reason why Romaland sign is still there, we've been told, is the city only incorporated half, half of Romaland, or three-quarters of the portion of what's known as Romaland. So the Romaland, there is still a Romaland out there, but a portion of that Romaland is in city boundaries. That's why the Romaland sign's there. Quail Valley Fire Station signage, that, that Quail Valley Fire Station's been known as a Quail Valley Fire Station for as many years as probably Sun City's, just like the Sun City Post Office. So those are the two answers on that. The traffic congestion, we didn't really, it's not really a priority list for the capital improvement projects. You'll notice that Holland, as you pointed out, you believe it's actually last, it's not a list, it's not a ranking of, of best to worst, or most favorite to least favorite. What it is, it's a ranking based on our CIP program over the next five years. So we've identified funding, and we're able to put that funding into when the project will be ready to actually build. The reason Newport's first, is Newport's on the TUMF network. The city council last year actually approved $17 million through a TRIP financing program we did with our, well, 20 million, with our gas tax and measurability funding to go toward Newport, 'cause it was 95 percent complete. It already had a, it already had an opportunity to go through a preliminary design. Plans and specifications were done, the environmental's done, the right-of-way acquisition was cleared. So in, in all cases under the CIP now, no other project actually had money or funding assigned to it prior to January of this year. And in fact, when we first started looking at our funding, our five-year CIP funding, we always continued to work in a vacuum. We were only doing one year at a time. So we're scraping together, how can we do this one project and this one great thing where we'll solve all our problems? Well, we realized that one thing's not gonna solve our problems. We have many problems. There's, there's seven projects that we've outlined in the, in the capital improvement program, and that is a five-year program. It's $69 million. That includes future money that's coming. So back to Holland. If we were to take the $20 million that council approved for Newport and put it toward Holland, you wouldn't still be, be able to build Holland for three years. It's in preliminary design. It has not gone through environmental. It's not even had the plans and specifications done to actually build or go out to bid for that project. Furthermore, it's not on the TUMF network. So because we're putting $17 million in Newport, we're actually gonna be able to assign a credit with TUMF or WRCOG, RCTC, to get that $17 million back so we can, so we can actually build Holland. If you move the $17 million to Holland, and you wait two years, and you don't do Newport, and you build Holland, and that still takes what we projected it to be, you're forfeiting the money for Newport. You'll never have Newport built. Newport's 12 and a half million dollars shy, and the county has, has stepped up to the plate and said that they're gonna, they're gonna meet that 12 and a half million dollar gap. So there was never really funding decided for, for Holland in the first place. And because it's not on the TUMF network, it has to be paid for with local dollars. That's why it's structured in the way it is. If you don't build Newport first and spend 17 on Newport first, you won't get the opportunity to have that reimbursed so you can build Newport and Holland. So it's not Newport versus Holland, it's Newport and Holland. We have five to seven projects in the next five years that this council is dedicated funding for. They're gonna approve, hopefully tonight, the first year of that funding, but it's a five-year, it's a five-year process that revolves. Hopefully, I've answered the questions to your satisfaction.
Well, thank you for the short answer. The bottom line is, is that a couple of us may have some additional comments about this during Councilmember comments. Did you have a question, Deputy Mayor of Staff?
I wanted a clarification. I have talked to the city manager, and I have talked to Jonathan. The citizens have every right to be concerned. We made those promises, that we would put Holland overpass first, and that was our intention. I know that was the mayor's intention. I know that was Greg August's intention. We all were under the assumption that it was a choice, and that bad things might happen if we took Newport first. There was a split on this council, and it was a very aggravated, acrimonious discussion. Management, it's been made crystal clear to management. The votes are here. If there is any option whatsoever to put the Holland Road overpass first, that is a policy position and a directive of this council. Having said that, and I need affirmation probably both from the city manager and Jonathan, we thought we had a choice. It is my understanding we do not have any viable choice, and the reason is, and by the way, in reference to our promise, as we sit here tonight, we are working on the Holland overpass. As we sit here tonight, we are doing preliminary work on the Holland, Holland overpass. It's simply not gonna get done as quickly as Scott and Edgerton and August wanted it done. We wanted it done yesterday. But it is my understanding that if we take and push that power position, that we will not get the Holland Road overpass one day earlier, and all we'll do is set back Newport. We have no way of meeting it. As far as you're concerned, that we were not fully apprised, that's a fair criticism. And all I can do is apologize. I campaigned on that in good faith. We are, we are in the process of going for the Holland Bridge. What I wanna make sure, that the public understands, we have no choice at this moment, because we can't push it forward even one day by having the council, and we have the votes, and we have the majority to do it. Now, so that's what I wanna be clear on, Rob. Is that precisely, exactly, and categorically correct, what I just said? That if we take the muscle of three votes up here, or probably four, that it won't push Holland Road one day ahead, and all it'll do is harm the Newport project? Is that a correct statement?
That is a correct statement.
Okay, thank you. Next, next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Peter Thorworth.
Great job. Great job.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to speak on behalf of Arts Council, Menifee. I want you to know the good news. The Summer Youth Arts Institute began yesterday, Monday morning, at Quail Valley Elementary, Elementary School, and our goal continues to be to teach 400 children the principles and skills of drawing and painting, lessons that they can employ throughout the year and the rest of their lives. We want to thank the city for supporting this program with 2012 block grant funds. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Katie Manier.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Once again, this city is going to be absolute gridlock when Newport starts. It's already gridlocked at that intersection, and there's nothing on the other side of the freeway to shop at. Everything is on this side of the freeway. Getting to the schools is on this side of the freeway. I just wanted to add that to what Mr. Yoder said, anyway. Then I'm going on, 'cause I think this city was misnamed. Instead of being Menifee, I think it should be Manifee. Seems like it, Menifee sounds like a group running the place. Sounds like a group of men, a group of people. I think this city's being run by one person, one man. This is a general law city, and it's to be run by a city council, presided over by a mayor. The mayor does not run the city. He runs the council, listens to what they have to say, but does not run the city. I'm requesting tonight a copy of all invoices for services to Ms. Biggs, by Ms. Biggs. I would like not only amounts, but what the services were for. We need accountability for all meetings between Ms. Biggs and our mayor. Why are they bypassing the planning commission and the city council and holding meetings just between the two of them with the city footing the bill? Taxpayers want accountability. I will be putting that request in writing to Ms. Bennett tonight as I go home and get online, and I would like some answers. I want everything accounted for. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I just wanna make a brief comment. First of all, Katie, as I will say later, to all of you who are activists, thank you, thank you, thank you. No city will be healthy without you. I may not agree with you, we may not agree with you, but you make a city better because of what you do. I just wanna put a plug in for the mayor. The mayor does not do anything without the support of the council, and he has the full support of this council. We think he's doing a great job. I hope the public thinks he's doing a great job, too. And I'm not saying we're not falling short, because when, when I get a chance to do public comments, I'm gonna address some things that are, happen to be disturbing me particularly in the last few days. But if we're to blame, we're all to blame. Don't blame Scott. That's not fair. He's doing a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton. Next speaker, please.
Leah McGee.
Hi, Councilwoman Mayor, Deputy Mayor. My name is Leah, President of Quail Valley Community Group. And the first thing I would like to address is I would like to invite anyone, Tom Furman, anyone to come to our meetings the second Tuesday of every month. We requested you by email, now we're requesting you in person. It's July 9th, 7:00 PM. We would also like you to bring with you an update on our CSA funds. And then the third thing we would like to mention is we wanna keep our deputies in Quail Valley. We don't want our deputies going out. We understand that sometimes there's emergencies, and you have to call the deputies out, and we don't have a problem with that. But when you have to call our deputies out, that means we're down a deputy. We don't have deputies in our community. We only have two, and they work different days. So we wanna keep our deputies in Quail Valley when their duties are, when they're on duty, and keep them there, unless there's an emergency. We don't have a problem with that. But like I said, we're finding that they're sometimes getting called out for unnecessary things, and takes away from what we're paying them for through our CSA funds. So I would like to just mention that and make an announcement on that, and July 9th. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure that the District 2 Councilmember, Mr. Furman, would be happy to be there. And in terms of deputies and public safety, there's a term called mutual aid, and all of our public safety goes on mutual aid calls. So depending upon what it is on any given day, any given situation, those who wear that uniform are in a mutual supporting role of one another when there's a big conflagration in terms of fire, or a big call in terms of law enforcement. So please understand that. So please understand that. Next speaker, please.
Louis Mazy.
Mayor and City Council, I wasn't really expecting to make any comments tonight, but I want to remind the council that there was an election back in 2008 to incorporate into the city of Menifee. Also, part of that ballot was choosing a name. I rather, I've been, rather wished that the city would have been known as Menifee Valley, but because the majority voted for Menifee, that's the name that we go by. Also, it's very confusing when certain communities want to be designated over other neighborhoods. I live in a zip code 92586 and also next to the senior core. I live in the family development. I've been changing all my mail to be known as Menifee, California. And many people voted for cityhood, which, you know, one in the last slide, 62 to about 38 percent. And many of them voted for a city of Menifee because they want to be known as Menifee. And so when you are addressing the concerns of Sun City, please consider us, who live in family developments and also others who live in senior developments outside of the traditional Sun City Civic Association boundaries. We want to be known as Menifee for many reasons. And please help us to get that designation. And finally, I want to also point out that since you're going to be appointing economic development committees throughout the city, many people think that Sun City is an incorporated city, and it's confusing. And also, when you look at the map, five years later, you're not seeing Menifee as a city of 82,000 people with a geographic area of about 48 square miles. You're seeing Sun City, Quail Valley, Romaland. When are we going to be designated as a place? And I hope that our concerns will be also considered. This concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. August?
Mr. Mazy, when I was running for the campaign trail, I went to almost every registered voter's door in the city of, in District One. The most, the most often comment that I received was, from some of the seniors, was they objected to the city of Menifee taking the Sun City sign off the freeway. My only point is, is that, look, Sun City was the original community in this area, and I don't, not to take away from Temecula, Romaland, or Quail Valley, but listen, we had our own libraries, we had our own banks, we had our own golf courses, we had our own libraries. We had a whole community here. We still have a viable commercial center. We're not talking about taking away the name or from the city of Menifee. All we're doing is asking for a little identification on the freeway, much as they do in Temecula with a sign that says, "Old Town Temecula." So what we'll be doing is we'll be continuing the research, the council will probably end up having to vote at it, and I respect your opinions, but I also have to listen to the opinions of the other people in the community. And that's where we are right now with that. Nothing's for sure. We're not sure we can do it, but I promised the voters that I would look into it for them and at least bring it up to the council and to the people of District One in the city. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Denver?
My concern is, is that we're speaking to things that are not on our agenda. It seems to me that in having these discussions, it's improper. We never noticed anybody that we were going to have these discussions. Anybody who wishes to speak on these issues could have come and spoke. I think that we should control the comments of this council having to do with these issues and stay on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Denver. Controlling the meeting is the pleasure of the chair, the mayor, and I've already consulted the city attorney on this matter. And under the Brown Act, the Brown Act does not preclude us or staff from providing a limited response to the public. And so as long as I'm on this board, we're going to provide very limited comment for the sake of improving the communication with the community. Next speaker, please.
Could I have the attorney's position on that?
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Speaking as the president of Rotary, I wanted to thank the city for the proclamation they gave us on May 30th for our 50th year anniversary of being the first service club here in Menifee. And I really want to appreciate Scott attending. The mayor was there, so was Mr. Furman, and it was very nice to see the present, can't even talk, the council there and to get the proclamation notifying the fact that we have been doing 50 years of service and we intend to continue doing another 50 years. So 100 years from now, you're all invited. 50 years from now, we're going to have another party. But do thank you for it and for partnering with Rotary. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Those are all the commenters under the public comment portion of your agenda.
All right, thank you. We're on to council member updates and comments. Council, what's your pleasure? Who's got something that they wanted to like to report out on? Mr. Deputy Mayor Edgerton, you're up.
I just wanted to make a few comments based on some of the previous speakers, not just tonight, but former nights. I, first of all, I want to compliment any activist. You know, we always talk about how effective a democracy is, and democracy's no more effective than how involved people are. So when people become activists, I know they are, to be blunt, can be a real pain in the tail, and they may even get up and articulate ideas that we don't agree with, but that's called democracy. So thank you very much to the activists. I would say, though, however, that when you pull out specific names of people on staff, that while, under the First Amendment and an activist, you have every right to do that, and again, kudos to you for being an activist, but I don't, I don't think it's fair, I don't think it's the right way to do things. If things are not going right in this city, as Grant Yoder just accurately pointed out, we're the ones that made the promises. We are the ones that ran for election. Staff did not run for election. They didn't make any promises. We did. So if there are some challenges, and I think there are, then y'all to raise hell with us. Come after us. That's, that's what we're here for, that we ran for election, we should be big boys and take the heat in the kitchen. I just, we mentioned Holland Road, we've already discussed it. I know that during the campaign, we were concerned about planning. Planning is the biggest issue in any city, and it's one of the reasons why many planners have graduate degrees in planning plus years of experience under a very experienced and educated planner. And we have a new city, and the reason planning is so important is it drives your policy. If you're concerned about revenue in a city, planning is what drives your revenue, depending upon your demographic, depending upon the kind of housing, planning drives that. What about your commercial? Planning drives that. The kind of housing you have determines the kind of commercial you have. What about your home values? The planning department will affect home values. What about police? How many police should you have? Your director of planning needs to understand how many police you should have. The kind of housing you have, the kind of demographics you have, and the plans that you have in a city drive the number of police that you have. Two cities of the same size perhaps don't need anywhere near the same police. It depends upon the planning. And you look at, I mean, it's so complicated. You look at the future. We're going to have trains coming through here, we're going to have metrolink coming through here. Are we going to need grade separation? That's expensive. That takes a lot of planning. How long ahead are you going to look? Well, if it's going to be 10 years from now, we ought to be working on it today. And planning involves itself, I see Marty sitting over here with these trails, planning immediately impacts trails. And I talked to a developer the other day, I said, "We want upscale housing." He said, "Well, you better have broad streets, tree-lined streets," and he mentioned hibiscus, I love them, I've got a lot of them in my yard. They're beautiful flowers and we should have them along the avenues. But you don't want them along your horse trails, because they'll kill your horses. You need to know that if you're, you know, there is so much to know in planning. We were criticized, we made promises, and we didn't keep those promises. We still need to improve some things because there's still a lot of misunderstanding. What drives planning is policy, and everyone on staff needs to be super sensitive to the policy, because we reflect the community and if we make a mistake at election time, you throw us out. Or you pat us on the back and keep us in. Developers, there's no bad developer. We need developers. Anybody who isn't pro-development doesn't understand how a city works. There are bad projects, and that's up to the staff to make sure that that developer understands what we need. And you don't want to push a developer along. A developer can sink a million dollars easy into a project before he ever gets to the planning commission. And if you haven't made it very clear what his probabilities are, that's exceedingly unfair to the developer, and you end up being an unfriendly town in reference to business. And the thing they understand is time, we ought to drive it through. So we need, I've seen some things recently and over time that have been very disappointing to me, and I know we were quite vociferous about that during the campaign, all three of us. And we have a ways to go. We need to keep those promises, and we haven't kept them yet. So I want to acknowledge that to the people who have concerns. But bear in mind, it isn't people who drive a city, it's policy. Thank you.
Mr. Denver?
Mr. August and I met as an aquatics ad hoc committee to discuss allocation of $200,000 in voluntary developer contributions to a regional aquatics facility to serve the Menifee area. The city manager, finance director, development director, city attorney were present. The $200,000 is a voluntary contribution, was a, two voluntary contributions for a regional aquatic center that came before we became a city. The original aquatics, regional aquatic center was abandoned by the county in favor of the Paris Menifee Valley Aquatic Center. Transferring the $200,000 developer contributions to the county for the use of the Paris Menifee Valley Aquatic Center serves the original purpose of the contributions by supporting a regional aquatics facility that serves our people here in Menifee. By the way, the schools are all planning, our schools are planning on using these aquatic facilities more than Paris or any other one, although everyone's welcome to. I'd request that the council have a consensus, if possible, to direct the city manager to bring back a report for the July 2nd meeting with an MOU to follow that would have us consider sending this $200,000 to the county for its proposed use.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And so you've got direction from the council to do that, and thank you both for your service on that ad hoc committee. It was an important thing to do, to answer the question and find out what we can do to participate. So thank you for that. And Mr. Denver, you still have the floor?
I, thank you. The Public Safety Committee met on June 10th to discuss the fire services in our city, and we received a complete and inclusive look at fire services, the number of stations and coverage for fires and medical aids from Chief Rodriguez. The next committee meeting will be, is scheduled in July and will be equally full description of police services in Menifee, just keeping you up to speed.
Thank you, Councilmember Denver. Mr. Furman?
I didn't even hit my button, but I will talk. I attended the Ramona Humane Society Gala event over at Golden Era. It was a luau, and I always get roped into doing the hula anyhow with those hula girls. But it was a wonderful event, and I'm sure they raised a lot of money, they had a very great turnout. I think I had to fight for a seat, but it was very nice, right on the golf course, right on the greens with campfires and fire dancers and the whole nine yards. Also, another comment I'd like to make is possibly a timeline on the general plan, if that could be brought up somehow to make sure we have enough time to make necessary comments and stuff, if we could establish a timeline on that. Okay, thank you.
That's a good concern, I believe. Mr. Johnson, are you planning on, do you have a, do you have a topic under City Manager's report tonight that deals with the general plan?
We do. We have a short update tonight. We'll be coming back next, next meeting. We were waiting for an impending economic development report, which is one of the first pieces of the, of the puzzle for the general plan update. So we have a short update tonight under City Manager update.
Okay, thank you very much. And then we can, we can have some comments during that as well, I believe. Mr. August, do you have any updates? No? Okay, thank you. City Attorney, could you please, in reference to Mr. Denver's concern earlier, could you please provide a brief, did what I articulate is accurate? Under the Brown Act, it doesn't preclude necessarily from staff responding on matters that have already been heard by the council or already been decided upon, or a matter of policy and limited, limited response to the public during public comment. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is. You, of course, have been a little chatty this evening, but perhaps more chatty than usual. However, what the Brown Act says is that you are not to engage in dialogue or particularly take a topic that comes back to you from the audience and discuss it amongst yourself. That is to engage in discussion, set policy, go in a particular direction. But in terms of individual comments to the public about topics that they have raised, you can make limited statements. And I would encourage you to limit them a little bit more.
Okay, I shall endeavor to do so. If you would also punch in on your dial and say, "Mr. Mayor, you need to, you need to cease."
Maybe I'll just flash the green light or something.
Yeah, Mr. Denver?
All I wanted to say was is that I'm not criticizing commenting to the comments. What I'm saying was is that we actually did do what you said we shouldn't do. There was discussion back and forth about what our policy was, we had enough votes here to do something, and on and on and on. I think we wandered over into it. I think, my point is, is that what I would like to do in addition to comment is, if something comes up that's worthy of note, let's put it on the agenda for next time and, and talk about it.
That is always a wise thing.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Appreciate the clarification, both, Mr. Deputy Mayor Edgerton, and it's my turn at some point.
A little bit of communication with the public, I think is always good, because if they come up and say something and we don't respond, they think, "Well, what's going on?" So sometimes I think a response is good. But based on what you've just said, there's, it may be that we've already broken the Brown Act, according to Mr. Denver. So if we've broken the Brown Act now, what, what happens, Counselor?
Well, you have not made any decision. You have not taken any action. You have not actually deliberated consciously. So you're just going to have to say you're sorry and go on.
Well, that's expecting a lot to have us conscious in the first place, but do you, if we broke the Brown Act, what would happen?
If you break, if you actually had done something in terms of taking some action that was not on the agenda, the members of the public who chose to could challenge that. The, the answer to that is to hear the matter again on an agendized basis and then act again. So there is a very real and immediate cure to doing that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, I appreciate that. I have two quick updates. I attended the Western Riverside Council of Governments General Assembly meeting last Thursday, and just a quick comment about the Holland Road overpass, because I appreciate your comments on the Holland Road overpass as well as yours, Mr. Johnson, but if you have any, if you have anybody to blame on it, you blame me, and I'll tell you why. They came, they came on board with my idea, because when I was on the council before, I was in Mr. Denver's position on the Western Riverside Council of Governments, and I, I did through my role there, as well as the previous city manager and the public works folks, to add the Holland Road overpass onto the Tump network in terms of a future item. And so it never got funded, come to find out. And so while I'm out there thinking that things, while I was away from the council, thinking that things were progressing forward to a point where, okay, we got to be getting close, the reality was, when we got in here and we found out that that was not really the case, we were literally two to two and a half years away from even starting on the Holland Road. overpass because of planning, engineering, design, and that environmental, that pesky environmental report under CEQA that has to be done, which is the longest lead time. So for us, I mean, we, we talked about it, we debated about it in public during the workshop. And, uh, because of the impact to our future economic development along the Newport corridor, along Hawn, where you have 48,000 vehicle trips a day, east and west on Newport Road, 89,000 vehicle trips a day, north and south on the I-215, uh, it would, it would have been a silly decision on our part to say to staff, sorry, because of a campaign promise, we're going to prioritize Holland over Newport Road, when it just didn't make economic sense, engineering sense, and environmental sense. So, uh, blame me, uh, don't blame Mr. August and don't blame the Deputy Mayor, because I convinced them to support me on that. So, uh, we're going to move forward in a, in a sequencing. Uh, the Newport Road widening and the Menifee Road completion is actually going to improve traffic circulation a little bit, um, uh, at the Newport Road interchange. So that when, when we actually start constructing it at nighttime, contrary to a previous speaker, uh, we're going to limit activity, construction activity during the day, so that people can go back and forth and, and engage in commerce in the city and engage regionally in their transportation efforts. And so, uh, when they, when the county goes out to bid, they're going to honor our desire from a policy-setting objective to, uh, do maximum amount of construction that we can at night. So I think that, and then we're going to do a better job too, from a city standpoint. Uh, the men, our new magazine, Menifee Matters, uh, the community magazine, uh, the Oasis Newsletter is a very targeted audience because a lot of construction is going to impact them directly. And so as we, uh, go down these construction projects, we'll do a better job of getting the word out and articulate why we decided the way that we did. So help us spread the word. Yeah, we did say those things, but when we got up here, the reality was just, it was not executable. So with that said, um, I see no other green lights for speakers. So on to the consent calendar. Are there any modificate, uh, yes, Madam Clerk?
Public commenter on your consent calendar, would that be taken now?
Oh, thank you very much. Please.
Grant Yoderz?
Good evening once again, Grant Yoderz, Community of Sun City. Once again, I stand before you addressing the consent calendar. I see that we have a rather long list of items tonight, 13 to be exact, and they will be, all be approved in one big swoop without an explanation to the public of what any of them entail. Of course, you will say that we can go online to get an update. However, a lot of folks don't know that. So the citizen in the chamber deserve a brief overview. Again, you will say this would take too much time. I say transparent governance has no timetable. If time is a problem, start the meetings an hour earlier. And just a footnote, when was the last time you went to a county supervisor's meeting? They, the supervisors pull practically every item on the consent calendar. I occasionally go to Willmore Council meetings, they pull every item. It is my opinion that respect and confidence can only be gained by the council through openness and transparency. That's the democratic process.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers on the consent calendar?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. What's the pleasure of the council? Are we going to have a motion to approve the consent? Or do we have some items that we would like to pull?
Code 10.4.
Okay, Councilmember Furman is pulling, for the record, Councilmember Furman is pulling Agenda Item 10.4. That is the agreement with Daper, Rosenblatt, and Litvak for special counsel for code enforcement. Do we have any other items wish to be pulled?
Uh, 10.7.
Let the record show that Deputy Mayor Edgerton is pulling Item 10.7, which is to approve an agreement with the County of Riverside Transportation on Land Management Agency On Call Planning Services. Can, may I have a motion on the, uh, did you have another one?
That's yours. I just wanted to make sure you didn't want to comment on it.
No, no, I'm not gonna, yeah.
So moved.
All right, may I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank, it's been motioned by Mr. Denver, seconded by Mr. Edgerton. You may have a roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. On the balance of the consent calendar, Councilmember August, Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann.
Aye. Uh, this, Mr. Furman went first, uh, 10.4. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much. Here's what's happening if you want transparency. There's a pursuit of anyone who is deemed to be in violation of the home occupation ordinance. So rather than work on a solution to the existing businesses in the Royal Community to help them succeed, it's been elected to pay a high-dollar attorney in Los Angeles. The code enforcement will supply all the paperwork to this attorney. He can use his muscle to pressure the hard-working citizen, citizens from our community and treat them like criminals making threats of jail and outrageous fines. Does this city want to get a lawyer, the applicant get a lawyer, and a judge make a decision? This is a terrible waste of our tax dollars. All these home-based businesses people want is to be dealt with fairly. A vote on this item affects a multitude of businesses. If the council approves this expense, I will be the first to take a bullet to protect the home-based business in the Royal Community. I'm going to read a quote that all the council agreed and signed. It was under Resolution 13312. "The city of Menifee has the right to institute its own development and environmental policies. The local control of land use decisions is an essential part of our American culture and way of life, and it's primary vehicle for achieving community goals while respecting private property rights." When are we going to stand up on our feet, cut the strings from Riverside, and make our own positive decisions here in a city of Menifee? Thank you.
Okay, before we go on to the next, Councilmember Furman, I'm not going to let you mislead the public with your statement that you just read. The reason why this agenda item is on here, it is a contract for code enforcement. It was a contract for code enforcement that the majority of the council directed staff to engage in, okay, to provide a detachment from an ethical standpoint for code enforcement on your property and others. And I'll give you the back the floor very briefly because we're not going to spend a lot of time on this. For you to say that this agenda item has anything whatsoever to do with home-based businesses is misleading the public. You have asked for this council to support you to bring back a staff report to review the home-based business ordinance, the home occupation ordinance. That is on staff's list to bring back, per your request, as seconded by me. And for you to try to draw a correlation between that ordinance and this contract is an absolute misstatement of facts. And, and where you went to with, with the Riverside quote, and when are we going to divest ourselves from Riverside, I have no idea how that has anything to do with, uh, extending this contract to provide, to provide you and this council and the city attorney and our staff with legal protection by having a third independent party adjudicate administratively issues that are on your property. That is why this contract is before us for extension tonight. I wanted you to know that in the public because I wasn't going to allow that misstatement to go. Mr. Furman?
The fact that we did pass a contract in January to, uh, ask for help when there is a criminal prosecution needed and necessary, I believe that we have gone too far right now to be spending money with this other attorney when all the decisions can be made right here in our own backyard.
Okay, very well. That's an, that's an articulate argument. Mr. Denver, or excuse me, Mr. Edgerton?
Uh, yeah, I'm.
I don't want to spend a lot of time.
No, I'm not. I've taken the city attorney's advice on this and, and my inclination is to support it. Seems pretty straight up. My concern, um, and I'm, I'm, is about, uh, Mr. Furman's comments regarding some of those businesses. And I want to make sure that we have the right of review. I know that some businesses, for example, if you, uh, decide to go in, whether it's the police or quote enforcement or whomever, they get to go before the council and the council acts as, as a court, uh, which they can then appeal from there to, to what we would refer to as the regular court. When somebody's been in business for 10, 15, 20 years, oftentimes, uh, one looks at the possibility of being able to provide, um, legal non-conforming use practices, uh, depending upon what the circumstances are. And I don't want to get any particulars here because I'm not prepared to do that. I know that we do that on structures. For example, I managed a piece of property in, in Newport Beach. Um, we were higher than an ordinance which was passed, uh, but we became a legal non-conforming use that went with the title rather than the owner. With a business, oftentimes legal non-conforming use will go with the owner and therefore it ceases with, 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 with the owner. But that has to be some special relationship, you know, with the support of the council. So this is a topic that I hope that we go back and visit again. And, and the mayor, as he pointed out, has seconded your motion, Councilman Furman, so that we do have a chance to come back and look at this. You're, you're concerned about fair treatment for different situations, and, and I agree with you on that. But I do feel compelled to support the motion that we've got before us.
As we all are, since we unanimously approved by a vote of 5-0, a, a business licensing process for provisional licenses extending for two more years the ability for some of these businesses who are non-compliant to obtain compliance. Mr. Denver?
On, on the issue at hand, um, is Tom Furman allowed to vote on this?
It's my decision.
I doubt it.
It is ultimately Mr. Furman's decision. He has been advised that, uh, under the Political Reform Act and the, uh, Fair Political Practices Act, that there is certainly a risk in view of the fact that, in fact, this attorney has, uh, before him and has acted on his property. So I represent the city. And Mr. Furman may accept or reject whatever advice I give, but I don't give it to him. I give it on behalf of the city, and it's his choice.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Furman, you have the floor?
Since.
You're muted.
Since, is it mute?
Yeah.
Yeah. Since I am a member of this multitude of businesses, I am a member of at least 200 home-based businesses in the Royal Community. It affects my constituents also. Uh, since I am a member of that multitude, it affects more people than just me. End of story.
Agreed. That's why we're going to, that's why we're going to bring back a review of the home-based business ordinance in the future to see if we can't alleviate some of the concerns. But the matter, gentlemen, the matter before us tonight on this now consent calendar is continuing an agreement with this third independent attorney firm. May I have a, well, we've got the city attorney.
Just, just to complete the picture here, this is a very limited contract. It's intended only to be used when there are situations where there's a potential conflict between the city attorney's office and the person who is subject to code enforcement. So it is not a blanket, uh, assignment of all code enforcement to this firm.
It has a laser-sharp focus in that regard.
That's correct.
May I have a motion on this item?
I don't need clarification.
May I have a motion on this item, please?
So moved.
May I have a second? Roll call vote, please.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember August, Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
The one last thing I would ask staff to do in the future is that, you know what? We hire professional staff to make decisions for us. And the city manager, you have the authority under the purchasing code to execute these types of contracts. And so, you know, perhaps this even, shouldn't even have been on the agenda. And you could have, you could have done this contract under your authority in the purchasing code, would be my feedback. Madam Attorney?
Yes, just to, uh, alert you to how this actually proceeded. In fact, Mr. Johnson did use his authority to engage Mr., um, Rosenblatt to, on, on a particular matter. That amount of the contract has been expanded or nearly expanded. And as a result, he no longer has the authority to do that. And that's why it has come to the council.
Thank you very much for that clarification. I really appreciate it. I sit corrected. Uh, Agenda Item 10.7, Mr. Edgerton, you have the floor?
Briefly on this one, uh, it says approve agreement with County of Riverside Transportation and Land Management Agency for On-Call Planning Service. There's nothing new about this. We've been doing this. Uh, it's worked quite well. We've continued to work with the county and they've, uh, continued to, to help us. In this case, there seems to be good rationale. Um, uh, it's, it saves time and money rather than to try to get a whole staff up to speed and keeps us from having to hire too many other staff. Nevertheless, I just, just a point of, of reminding all of us, and I know I'm not saying anything new to my colleagues or to staff, but, uh, whenever we can come up to speed on any of these issues in reference to planning in-house, uh, it always gets us closer to the situation and there's less chance maybe of misunderstanding. Uh, the county's done a great job for us. So this certainly isn't a criticism of county. But we did choose to become a city. So to the degree it's possible, whenever we can move to fill some of these slots with our own people, that would, that would be my only concern. And I would so move the item.
May I have a second?
Second.
Do we need a roll call vote on this?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
Councilmember August, Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye. Okay, that looks like that takes care of the consent calendar, yes?
Yes, sir.
Um, on to public hearings. Agenda Item 11.1. This is a continued public hearing for adoption of cost services of the fee study. And this is a continued hearing from May 28th. Um, Mr. Johnson, do you have, could you, is there any brief update that you would like to make in terms of a quick staff report on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. Uh, excuse me. City had a workshop study session on May 7th, 2013, and detailed the user fee study that was completed by revenue and cost specialists. Uh, the city held a public hearing to consider the adoption of the cost services study on May 28th. Staff recommended, uh, full cost recovery for the study, uh, which some fees and deposits, uh, are lowered and some are raised, as well as some deposits that were, uh, converted to fixed costs, uh, as well as the, providing the council, uh, three other options to consider. Uh, 80% cost recovery with 20% subsidy from the general fund, uh, no modification to the current deposit amounts, and full cost recovery on fee-based portion, and no changes to fee or deposits. As you know, the city's been operating under the outdated county fee deposit system since incorporation of, uh, and with this study, which is not about DIF fees or TUMP fees. We'll need to address DIF fees later in a study that we will need to prepare. Um, has been professionally assembled and presented and, and currently in the, we're in the middle of public testimony. Uh, during the last meeting, uh, BIA challenged the study and its results and, uh, told council want to perform its own study, asked for some additional information. Um, uh, staff has responded to the requests from the BIA. Uh, there's a little bit of a disagreement as to how far we responded or how much we responded. Uh, we did offer to meet with them. We've provided them a number of informational items through, uh, email, uh, links to each part of the study and the, and the workup, uh, document sheets. Um, staff's recommendation remains for full cost recovery and approval of the fees as presented in the study.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Council, before we take any additional, uh, public testimony, do you have any additional questions of staff at this time? All right, Madam Speaker, do we have any, uh, public speakers on this item?
Yes, sir. I'm going to show we're continuing this, um, public hearing, just for the record, at 8:10 PM.
Thank you.
And Mr. Bill Blankenship.
My name is Bill Blankenship. My name is Bill Blankenship. I'm the CEO of Riverside County Building Industry Association.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Mann, members of the council, senior members of staff. We appreciate the opportunity to have additional time to look at the study, and I'm not going to stand up here and debate how much information we got or didn't get. Suffice to say, we don't have enough to say that we support this study this evening. Tonight, you're being asked to support a study that is not going to improve the quality of development in your community, the, it's not going to provide nicer homes. It's going to be more expensive for every applicant who walks in the door, from everybody who wants to build a subdivision, to a person who wants to open a business here in the community, to the homeowner who wants to build a patio cover or put in a water heater. And I believe that's something that this council should be concerned about. We keep hearing that the economy has recovered, and we keep hearing that better times are ahead. We all hope so, and we feel that times are better, but we have ever so long ways to go. Yesterday, excuse me, last week in the newspaper, there was an article about housing prices, and that housing prices have gone up here in Riverside County. In 2012, May of 2012, 3,900 homes were sold, and in May, 3,800 homes were sold, 3,855, 3,972 respectively. That was a 2.9% decrease. What's driving the price of homes today is a lack of supply, clearly, and housing prices have gone up 22.9%. That's great news, but what's driving that is a lack of supply. And if you go back and you look at the permit activity all the way back to the 1990s, we never dropped below 5,100 permits, single-family dwelling unit permits, in western Riverside County. From '91 to '96, we hovered between 5,100 and 5,500 units. Between 2008 and 2012, we hovered between 2,700 units, 2,800 units, and in 2011 was the lowest year of 2,088 permits, and the year before that, 2010, it was 3,321. What drove that was the homebuyer tax credits at the national and federal level. That's what drove that. The next year, when, when they went away, it went straight back to the lowest during the recession. Last year, we were just within 100 units of where we were in the early years of the recession. To get to the worst years of the 90s, we would have to have a 78% increase in permit activity. So I think we have a long ways to go.
Mr. Blankenship, that's your time.
Okay, thank you, and I urge you not to adopt this study this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blankenship. Do we have additional speakers, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Very well. I am going, is there any, any questions from the council of the previous speaker? I'm going to close this, Mr. August.
Mr. Blankenship, you said that, are you, I think you're kind of inferring, and I'm not saying you're wrong or anything like that, but you're saying that if we did adopt 100% cost recovery, that could affect the supply of homes in the city of many fees? And what's your basis on that?
My basis for that is that the market hasn't recovered, and that there'll be projects that won't pencil, that will not go forward.
So the projects, so, let's say for instance, you were asking for 80% cost recovery versus 100%, and you're saying that 20% is going to stop developers coming here and building homes?
I think every dollar counts.
Every dollar, okay.
And, absolutely. And when interest rates in the last three weeks have gone up consecutively, and we all believe that interest rates are going to go up in the next year to two years, what's driving home prices today is a restriction of supply, and the artificial knowledge or from people is that interest rates are low today, but they're not going to be low in the future. And that's what's driving the activity that we're seeing. This county's got a long ways to go before we can say we've recovered, and in our, in our opinion, and in the many comments that we've made, we do not believe the study is accurate, and we believe that there's flaws in the study, and that the assumptions in that study, we don't think are going to pan out. And at the end of the day, you know, from our belief, the county has thousands of permit experiences as they have developed their studies in the user fee that, that you have currently. And if, when you're in a deposit-based system, somebody comes in and they are charged exactly for the time that was spent on their project, on their inspection, on their review, whatever the process is, you're going to go to an average. There's going to be winners, there's going to be losers, and your study was developed with not enough data. That's why I'm going back and referring to the county, because they have thousands of data sets on all these permit activities. More than you asked for.
Pardon me, sir?
I think that was more than you asked for.
Was fine, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, and hearing, since we have no additional speakers, I am going to close the public hearing at 8:18. Council, we're inside the rail. What is your pleasure on this item? Mr. Denver.
Without going into great detail to try and shorten this meeting, could I just see if there's a second vote to, to recommend to management that we go to 80% and, because I, in one sentence, I personally believe that that 80% is 100% recovery, plus I think that we could review this whole thing in 12 months when the market picks up anyway. Do I have a second for that?
Is there, okay, so the motion, Mr. Denver's motion is for 80% cost recovery as one of the alternate recommendations in the staff report. Is there a second? Is there a second on Councilmember Denver's motion?
Mr. Mayor. Could I make, I'd like to make another motion. If, one of the problems with building in our area and other areas is the deposit system. It's a real, it's put together because it's, people think that builders are not trustworthy, and they, they ask for the money upfront because they may not pay their fees. Could, and, and I suppose there have been some. Might, I see if there's a second for keeping the deposits that are presently in our system the same in the new future it raised rates, but not raising the deposits, but having the 100% recovery. Do I have a, is there any way that there's a second on that?
Does everyone understand the motion?
What?
But I know, I'm going to give you the floor in a minute, but there's a motion before us. Is there, is there a second on, is there a second on Councilmember Denver's motion to keep the deposit levels the way they are currently, but go to a 100% cost recovery on all other fees as presented? Is there a second on that? Is there a second on Councilmember Denver's alternative motion? Hearing none, that motion fails. Councilmember Furman, you have the floor.
I, I think that all four options that we're talking about probably should have been announced. I think, I think there's four options that I read on this, and I think it would be fair if all four options were discussed, then pick a motion, and then you might get a second. Also, I have, I have one other question to staff. Sorry, Scott, I should have asked it earlier.
Okay.
On the permit processes that we accepted from Riverside County, okay, can permit processes be eliminated or added to by staff without the consent of the council?
Is the request about how we go about doing the business, or, I'm not sure what the question is?
A permit process, the, you say we have a whole, we have a whole list here of permit processes, okay. Can they be added or detracted by staff without a council approval?
In other words, can, can someone come into the counter, and can a staff member say that you don't need to have that process fulfilled or pay for that?
Say a hot water heater, just a hot water heater. Say the staff says, we don't want to do hot water heaters.
Policy decision. Those that are, those that are approved are approved, and those that aren't, aren't. Staff does not have the ability to change those.
They change those, so it's a council decision? Okay.
So an example of that policy decision would be the action that we took on the business, the provisional business license ordinance where we gave some of the businesses that got caught in the transition, remember how we, we said we'll give you two more years, but not only we're going to give you two more years to get compliant, we're going to give you a provisional business license for two years, we're also going to discount your fees by 50% to help you. That's a policy, that's the difference. We have to do that. Staff does not have that authority to do it at the counter.
Yeah, the, the discussion, and I think Greg and I had this about the fee for a water heater, you know, can that just be thrown out? That'd be a council decision. That's, I mean, it was just an example. We have a $183 permit fee to put a new water heater in your house, you know?
Actually, that's incorrect. The fee went down, if Terry Willoughby can address that.
Well, I mean, it doesn't matter, there's still a fee, but I mean, I don't care what it went down to, but, I think when I saw it, it was $183. So that's all, I'm just saying, can, could the council go through there and eliminate some of that stuff to make it more people-friendly?
Mr. Johnson?
Any fee that staff would propose would be related to the study that was performed, that's our basis for the actual fee that's set and the deposits that are there. So council can make a policy decision to, to go around that fee-based study, but we, staff does not have authority to do that. We performed a study, they went through the procedures to actually calculate what those fees and what those fixed costs would be based on the deposits and based on how we actually do business, and those are the fees that we would recommend, so we wouldn't have the ability to do that. Secondarily...
This is, is good.
Secondarily, there is an opportunity for us to work on our development processes, which would then change or allow us to go through a new cost of services study, which could further lower fees, or fees could also go up. There's a delicate balance you have there based on how you perform your duties.
Councilmember August.
Yeah, question the staff. Somebody, somebody comes to the, to the office, to the front desk with a permit for a roof, water heater, lattice, or something like that, shed, or whatever, and let's say they have a problem with these new, new fees that we might impose on these people tonight. What would, what would, would they say, I really don't, I think this is an outrageous price, I really don't want to pay it, what would, what would be their action at that point? And if we get a rush of calls like that, would it be the staff's point of view that they would let the council know that, hey, we're having problems with these fees? And what, would the council have to take action to lower those fees? Or what, what process does an individual have to get a permit to put a roof on his house if he, if he, if he doesn't like the high cost of the permit?
The recourse would be to either file a petition to the council to talk about the fees itself, get on the agenda so that that could be readjusted, so that council could then provide direction to staff back to perform possibly a new study. What we believe, based on the study that we've done, is that it takes into account the work product that we have, based on what our costs are, for everybody that walks in the door, and that's what we're presenting tonight. So council does have, again, the option, it's a policy decision, and you asked for four options, and we brought four, those four options back, but as a staff member, as your interim city manager, I feel compelled and don't believe that I can recommend anything other than 100% cost recovery.
Rob, would you read the four choices for the audience?
Absolutely. It was 100% full cost recovery, it was 80% cost recovery with 20% subsidy from the general fund, no modification of the current deposit amounts and full cost recovery, no changes to the current fees or deposits. Those are the four options.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton, you're up.
Well, this is a political opiate, and it's a very tough one, because pricing is not an exact science, and we kicked this can down the road for four years, and we're elected to make decisions, so I'm going to make a motion, and we'll see how it goes. But I, I empathize with the BIA. They've got a concern, they want to review the thing a bit more, but we've reviewed this thing for four years. I certainly empathize with Councilman August, because I'm, and he's fought hard for his seniors, and he's right to bring these topics up there. By the way, most people do not get a permit for a water heater, they should, but they don't. They just go out and buy a water heater. You know, why does a city want a permit? Because if you have a three-story building, the thing is a potential rocket, and that, that water heater can go straight through all floors and out the roof of the third floor and take anybody that's near it with it. So that's one of the reasons you, you get a permit for a water heater. But nevertheless, for, for little Lady Fontleroy in Sun City, I really empathize with Councilman August, and I would like to take a look at that, but tonight, I'm going to make a motion to pass this thing for 100% recovery, but because of some of the concerns that Blankenship has mentioned, and Councilman Denver, and Councilman August, Councilman Furman, I think we ought to, to make part of this motion that definitively in six months, we'll have another workshop to be able to review some of these items. That gives Councilman August and some of the seniors, maybe there's some special dispensation we should be offering them. That'll give Mr. Blankenship a time to do a real workup, and we expect the staff to cooperate and work with him. But for right now, my motion is to put this in place, 100% recovery, make the decision, but with it, have an automatic directive to council, and in six months, that will not end our cost procedure, we'll proceed, but at least we'll go into a workshop and begin to have a review and give people an opportunity to come back and review these costs. That's my motion. Do I have a second?
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second for a 100% cost recovery as presented by staff with a six-month review and workshop? Is there a second on, air's motion?
Yeah, I'll give him a second on that, but do I make a comment now before we vote?
Yeah, we'll, we'll go in order. So we have a second, we have a first, and we have a second, so we are now open for additional council discussion, and we'll take Councilmember Furman first, and then Mr. August.
I think I remember a, a discussion from the gentleman that did the survey, and in his gathering of all his information, I think he made a comment that he never kind of asked staff if they have any ideas and, and plans or suggestions on how they can cut costs. So that, I think, has to be taken into consideration. There might be fact that can be cut out by staff. There's, there's a lot of discretionary items put in a proposal, and there's a lot of, their personal opinions put in on some proposals. Basically, cut it to the chase, what's legally has to be required, and, and let it go at that, might cut our costs. I also, in another suggestion that might help, the county uses this customer satisfaction report, and I got a copy from Mr. Johnson, and it might be quite a, a aid if we get comments from applicants on ideas that they have on how they can cut costs. So I would like to take that into consideration. That was your copy, Wally, sorry. I just spent it, Wally. I'll get you another one.
All right, Mr. Furman, thank you. Mr. August?
I concur with Mr. Edgerton. This is a very, going to be a very anxious decision for me tonight. It really bears a heavy responsibility. I'm very good on working in houses and have helped people work on houses, and I, so I do have some concerns and have some, some foundation in this area. I hope the consultant's study is accurate, and believe me, we're going to find out whether it is very, very soon. My major concern is, as I said, for the individual homeowner and the small business owner, because if these fees are not right, and it's too burdensome and perceived to be unfair and ends up in a lack of trust for the city, people will start skirting the process and start building these houses on their own, and I don't want that to happen. So I am going to vote for approval of this, but I really have to ask for a commitment from my colleagues here. from my colleagues here. And I hope that, that we stay very, very vigilant in being prepared to adjust these fees necessary and downward as if possible, no matter how it affects the general plan. And I agree with Mr. Edgerton's six-month plan. This is a very serious decision we're making tonight. We, we got to get the feedback from the community and the data from the staff as soon as possible to get this right. And I'm very concerned about that, but I'm going to vote for approval, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? All right, I have a couple of comments that I'd like to make because this is an important decision. I've been very public about my position on this with everybody, both with the press and with the BIA and with individual members of the BIA and others. For me, you know, as a, as a public finance kind of guy and a businessman who owns my own firm, and I have to be concerned about overhead, as the mayor, I have to have the same position in terms of its impact on the general fund and revenues and expenditures. And so for me, this city has never, in its five-year history, made an adjustment to these fees that, these user fees. It's a huge, there's a big difference between the user fee and the developer impact fee, the transportation uniform mitigation fee, et cetera, which we need to attack in a, in a different agenda item. But for me, we've never adjusted these fees, either upward or downward, since we took them over from the county. This city has been very, very creative with its fees. Back in, the original council approved a DIF reduction of 50%. The original council approved a TUMF reduction, and those, those actions expired in 2010. This council approved a homebuyer rebate program to stimulate new homes in our city. And we also approved a Menifee cash Visa card rebate, so that homeowners, when they buy a new home, they get a rebate on their property, or they get a rebate on their escrow, and they also get a Visa card loaded with $500 at the time. All four of those actions were a 5-0 unanimous vote. The city's demonstrated its willingness to work with the industry because Mr. Blankenship did point out something very, very that people don't know. I mean, when you look at, when you look at Riverside County's permit activity since 2007, last year's permit activity for the Western Riverside Council, excuse me, the Western Riverside County area, we are still, the county is 2,000 single-family housing permits below the recession of 1991, when the Base Realignment and Closure Act modified March Air Force Base and made some adjustment to some other Southern California bases. It was a, one of those things that, it's really kind, kind of interesting to see how we've not been able to recover even to that level. But despite that, Menifee, though, has enjoyed, if you look at the permit data from 2009 through 2012, on the aggregate, Menifee has, is in second place behind the Riverside County unincorporated area in terms of total permit activity for that four-year period. So I like your motion because we get a decision tonight with a, with a, with an opportunity to bring this back and assess the efficacy of this action tonight and assess the economic impact to not only Mr. and Mrs. Smith in our neighborhoods that want to do a room addition or a patio cover or whatever, but to an applicant who wants to bring some additional housing product to our city. I would like to read something into the record, and I feel compelled to do this because, and bear with me, it's important because there's others that have, that recognize the same position. And because the Californian is now defunct, and not many people have had, maybe had the opportunity to hear or read this particular editorial, but I'm going to read this into the record, city clerk, if you would bear with me, please. May 26, 2013, Editorial Board, UT San Diego. "We normally don't like to see cities impose more fees on residents and businesses because by any impartial measure, Californians already are being heavily taxed, and the business climate in our state is one of the most unfriendly in the country. And yet, the new fee schedule that the Menifee's city council is considering and is likely to vote on on Tuesday ahead of the June 4 budget workshop, has our full support. Although it is true that the proposed fee structure could generate up to $1 million in additional revenue, and that money has to come from somewhere, the council deserves credit for having done its homework and crafting a sensible plan that merely asks residents and businesses to pay for what they get at the counter. Under Menifee's existing fee structure, some of the 158 services provided by the city cost more to deliver than, than they bring in through fees and deposits. That's according to a consultant's report in which outside experts sat down with city staff members to analyze the true cost of Menifee's services, from working with a promoter to a stage-block party to guiding a homeowner who wants to build in addition to his house through the permit process. In many cases, the cost to the city in worker hours and other expenses was significantly higher than the associated fees and deposits. In other instances, the actual cost was lower. The new fee structure levels things out so that applicants, rather than taxpayers as a whole, are paying for the service that they are requesting. Under the new fee structure, the fee for processing an application for a block party would go up from $50 to $470, and a fee that factors in what would cost the city to block off the streets and provide and deploy police to the neighborhood. Conversely, the deposit for a minor conditional use permit would go down from just over $9,700 down to $2,300. We agree with Menifee Councilman Wallace Edgerton, who said the key question in revamping the fee structure is, quote, "What does it cost the city?" Unquote. We don't think government should keep sticking its hands into people's pockets, but at the same time, we don't believe that taxpayers as a whole should be forced to subsidize services requested by and benefiting the private sector. On Tuesday, the council will vote either to adopt the proposed fee structure as it is, discount all or some of the fees, or leave things as they are. We urge the council members to vote in accordance with the simple rule of thumb: charge people for what they get so taxpayer, taxpayers aren't stuck with the bill for the rest, but not one penny more. Cities shouldn't profit off their residents, but they shouldn't lose money either." For all of these reasons that I've articulated tonight, as well as this very sound editorial, I will be voting in favor of this motion as well. Madam Clerk, may we call the roll, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember August.
Just clarification. This, the, this is the motion to pass the budget 100%.
Madam Clerk, would you restate the motion, please?
Yes, sir, I will. It was moved by Deputy Mayor Edgerton to adopt the user fee schedule as presented with 100% cost recovery and to return in six months for a review of how that is working.
That is the motion. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember August. Councilmember Furman.
Although, although there are at least a dozen items on this item...
I'm going to call you out of order. I'm going to call you out of order. We have called for the question. We've had public, we've had public testimony. We have debated inside...
And I don't have to, I don't have the right to explain how I'm voting.
We've debated within the rail.
Just a yea or nay? That's all I'm allowed to say?
At this juncture, yeah. Robert's rules in our decorum policy. We followed procedure. You had, you had the opportunity to articulate. The question has been called.
Okay. All you guys can say why you're voting before you vote, but I can't. So I will say no.
Thank you. Continue, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Denver. Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
On to Agenda Item 11.2. Madam Clerk, would you please read this agenda item because it appears, my understanding of this particular motion, it is a public hearing, but we're also going to have, as we consider this issue, we have four separate motions, and those need to be taken separately. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's exactly correct. It's a motion, or, sorry, an action tonight for a public hearing regarding the mitigated negative declaration for a sidewalk project that will require that you do these things. Conduct the hearing and then adopt the mitigated negative declaration as listed, award the bid as listed to lowest responsible bidder, and authorize the city manager to approve the change orders and increase the budget in capital projects funds in the amount of $39,408.
Thank you very kindly. Mr. Johnson, is there a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we're very excited to actually bring this forward. This, as you recall, was actually brought to us by a resident who talked to us on several occasions about the unsafe conditions around Hans Christensen Middle School. Jonathan Smith, your acting Public Works Director, City Engineer, has a report for you.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. It is with great pleasure tonight that I'm here to ask for your approval of this project. I'll walk you through it to give you the project details before we move forward. This is the, the objective of this project is to improve pedestrian safety. The scheduled construction start date is July 8 and should be completed by August 1. The current bid is for $39,408. Funding is available in the capital projects fund from revenue received from cash and loan deposits designated for street improvements. The project location is adjacent to the Hans Christian Middle School, as the city manager pointed out. Getting into the details of the project, it is located about 700 feet west of Hill Point, be connecting to the existing sidewalk there, and then connecting to the existing curb ramp located at Sherman Road, providing a continuous sidewalk for pedestrians to We will also construct a five-foot fence around the drainage area that's, will be adjacent to the sidewalk and exists today. And again, the recommended action is to conduct a public hearing, adopt a negative deck, award construction contract to the lowest bidder, which is Hillcrest Contracting Incorporated, authorize the city manager to approve change order not to exceed 15% of the contract, increase the capital projects fund by $39,408. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Are there any questions of staff to, of council to staff, please? No questions? Thank you very kindly. I will then, Madam Clerk, was the, was this properly noticed, and have we received any correspondence for this item?
It was properly noticed, and we've not received any correspondence in, on this item since the posting of your agenda.
All right, I'll open the public hearing at 8:44. And do we have any public testimony on this item?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
My name is Leah McGee, Councilwoman, Mayor, Staff. I'm across in Garda Boulder Ridge, which happens to be further on down. Now, at one point in time, someone from the city had come out and had taken pictures, and it's Uniparrel, and then there's Menifee Road, and where, and the area I'm specifically talking about is on the east side of McCall. Now, as you're saying, you're going to Sherman Way, and that stops at that point. But if you go past, over the hill, on the top of the hill, the medical center's right here, if you go further on down Boulder Ridge Middle School, which is turning in to an elementary school next year, you've got kids walking in the street because there is no sidewalk on the east side. So there is a definite issue, and I think that whole area needs to continue on. But you, if middle school, the kids were walking in the, in the street, can you imagine what's going to happen with elementary? It's a new school for the elementary school. It's turning in from middle school to elementary. So we have new kids, new staff, everything's new. My concern is those kids that are walking from the apartments and the housing development over across from the medical center, their kids are walking. Even elementary kids walk to school.
Ms. McGee, can you hang on? I'm going to give you, continue your time, but I need to get some advice from the attorney for just a moment, okay? The item before us is public testimony on a sidewalk project of which the speaker is not speaking about. And so I, I want to be correct here and give you an opportunity to speak on this agenda item specifically, and, you know, staff at some point can address the other issues that, because it's, it's on our list to do.
Okay.
So I'm going to ask you to cease your comments, unless you want to go ahead and speak about this particular stretch of sidewalk.
Oh, this is a great idea.
Okay.
I'm, I'm in favor, but it needs to continue on.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. McGee. I appreciate it. Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have additional speakers?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. I'll close the public hearing at 8:47. Counsel, it's before us. What's your pleasure on this item?
Move it.
Okay, okay, we just recall, what we need to do is, we have four, we have four action items, so we need to take these one at a time. So I would need a motion to adopt the mitigated negative declaration first. We have a second. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second.
That was Mr. Edgerton seconded.
Thank you. Councilmember August, Councilmember Furman. Councilmember Denver, Deputy Mayor Edgerton. Mayor Mann, thank you.
Aye. May I have a motion to award bid for project to the lowest responsible bidder, Hillcrest? May I have a second? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember August, Councilmember Furman. Councilmember Denver, Deputy Mayor Edgerton. Mayor Mann.
Aye. A motion to authorize the city manager to approve appropriate change orders as necessary.
Shall move.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember August. Councilmember Furman. Councilmember Denver, Deputy Mayor Edgerton. Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
And a motion to increase the budget in the capital projects fund in the amount of $39,408.
Shall move.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember August. Councilmember Furman. Councilmember Denver, Deputy Mayor Edgerton. Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, staff. On to Agenda Item 11.3. This is an extension of a moratorium on ordinance number 13125U, which is an urgency ordinance on metal shipping containers. This is a continued public hearing. Is there any brief staff report required to update us?
The staff report is merely to say that this is now before you. You will recall that on June 4, the council issued a report on progress to date that included the appointment of an ad hoc committee and so on for the steel container issue, and that at that time, the report was made available to the public for at least 10 days, which is required by statute. And now before you is the extension of the moratorium for a period of 10 months and 15 days, which is the statutory time limit. And of course, if during that time period, resolution is achieved in terms of where the council wants to go with new guidelines and regulations, then the moratorium can be lifted sooner than that. But this is merely an automatic kind of extension, assuming that you want to extend.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Attorney. Mr. August, are you going to provide an update from the ad hoc committee on shipping containers?
I think Mr. Denver and I can both do that.
Okay, very good.
We had a, we had an ad hoc committee with several people from the staff available, and there's a little bit of difference between Mr. Denver and I, but we're coming, coming together on it. We're scheduled to meet again on the 20th. And I, what I think is maybe one more meeting after that and give it to staff and see how fast they operate. Do you have any opinions on that, sir?
If you could just understand my point of view, then we could just have one. I think you're right.
That's all I have.
Thank you for that report, Mr. August and staff. Madam Clerk, were, was this properly noticed, and have we received any correspondence? Oh, wait a second, we are, we're in a continued public hearing, so do we need to restate that legally, that it was noticed at one point?
Excuse me.
Okay, confer. Sidebar between the clerk and the attorney.
I think you just have to pass it.
Yeah. Give it, and that gives us 10, 10 months.
Sorry.
You have to, have to open a public hearing.
I just woke up. Thank you so much. You are in a continued public hearing. I can just note that you're continuing public comment at this time.
Okay, very well. Do we have any speakers on this item?
Yes.
Okay, please proceed.
Hello.
Good evening.
I'm Vicki Romberger, and I was just wondering about the extension and the meeting. I was under the impression, there was a meeting last weekend at the Wooden Nickel. People showed up there, and there was no meeting to go over this. There was just a bunch of motorcycles and people there having a party and picnic. And I wondered when there's going to be more public... Wondering when there's going to be more public comment on this and what the issue is as behind you here. is as behind you here at AMR. There's a bunch of containers there. Are they part of this issue or are you just picking on homeowners that are using them for storage containers? And who are you looking at in regards to this? There's a lot of people in the area that have them for storage on acreage and have had them for years. And business owners here use them. They're right next door. There's three or four of them right outside. And we'd like more hearing and more people to know about it and what's going on. I wasn't informed until I saw it in the paper and then there was no meeting at the Wooden Nickel this weekend when everybody showed up at noon and it was in the press enterprise.
I'll go ahead and speak to give you an update where we're at with this issue. The ordinance before us is an urgency ordinance to prevent people from purchasing additional containers and putting them on their residential property until such time as we have an opportunity to review the ordinance that we adopted when the city incorporated, which was the same ordinance that the county had. And we're only talking about residential properties at this juncture. Commercial and business is a different ordinance. We've appointed an ad hoc committee of two council members, Mr. Denver and Mr. August, to review the ordinance with staff to bring back some recommendations to the full council on how we should proceed on this ordinance. And to that extent, I don't know when... And so we're... We have to extend this ordinance to prevent additional containers from coming in at this point while we continue to staff this ordinance. We will have an ordinance down the road and you will be absolutely properly notified through several different sources when to come back and speak.
I'd appreciate it.
Did that answer most of your question?
Yeah. I'd appreciate it because publicizing something in the newspaper and people show up and it's not there, you don't get a chance to do anything.
Well, and I can't officially speak to that because that was Mr. Furman calling a community meeting in his district. And so he has every right to do that, but it wasn't an official city meeting. So, all right. Where am I at here? Do we have additional speakers?
Yes, sir.
Please.
Dennis Nermesa.
Dennis Nermella.
I'm so sorry.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm glad to be here tonight. As most of you know, my wife and I just moved here about 25 years ago.
Just.
And have raised our family here. I'm actually in support of having the containers on properties. I do believe that there should be some, you know, some guidelines that should be set rather than just extending, extending, you know, look at it, make some decisions about it. But I don't have one. I want one. And let me tell you why I want one. Because anything I build made out of wood or even just the tin, you know, whatever I build, rats are going to get in, other insects are going to get in. And with those containers, I do a lot of consulting with businesses who store some of their extra equipment maybe on their home property. The rats cannot get into those. And I've seen some of those advertised as low as like $300. I mean, granted, most are about $1,500. But you can get a container, put some plants around, follow all the guidelines that the county now has, and it's going to look okay. And nothing matches it as far as the quality of the storage area that you have. So, yeah, I'm one of those people that doesn't want to get grandfathered in because I don't have one yet. So I... My suggestions are that you really consider the people in the future being able to have something because there is nothing that's comparable to it as far as the high quality of being able to keep out the rats. I'm on constant battle with gophers and squirrels and rabbits. Those of you that may live in some track housing may go, "Oh, cute little rabbit in my yard." But they destroy our stuff. And we've got a vehicle sitting, they may eat up the wiring and other things. So, equipment that costs a lot of money, the best way to store it that I've seen around, I've seen nothing comparable to those. So I think that it's important to realize in the future, there are some, if following guidelines, that it should be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Randy Williams.
I have great admiration for this governance team and its ability to make sound decisions. My hope is tonight that more thoughtful considerations will be given to alternatives of a moratorium. The initial April staff report, which was well-written, laid out the history of a county ordinance adopted by the city. I believe parts are worth repeating. The county's intent on the use and standards of the containers was to, quote, "Enhance aesthetic appearances, preserve property values, and protect the public's health, safety, and well-being," unquote. Today's staff report paints a very different picture of the city's view. It reads, "A moratorium is needed because, quote, 'The council declared there is a real and immediate threat of harm to the health, safety, and well-being of the community,'" unquote. How could there be such a contrast in intentions and perspective? The recommendation from the city attorney to extend the moratorium a year from its inception is for the purpose of more study. I admire any elected body that wants to get it right by taking sufficient time. What troubles me is the premise of a moratorium because it implies what you are banning is inherently wrong and it does not deserve the benefit of proceeding while the issue is analyzed. The staff report refers to the threat repeatedly with not even a hint there could be a benefit. The moratorium states, "Time is needed to, quote, 'Research the negative impacts of the containers,'" unquote. No research for positives or appropriate usage, and I wonder where the objectivity is with that. As someone who lives on five acres and has a container, the report implies I have no regard for public safety. I have no interest in beautifying my neighborhood and I have no interest in raising the property values. There are no responsible owners in this report. When I think of what my property would look like if strewn equipment and supplies were thrown out in the open instead of a closed container, I hardly see myself as a disrespectful neighbor. When I place devices and chemicals in a secure container away from the home, not near as accessible to children as the garage, I hardly view it as someone who disregards public safety or a family's well-being. How much of a nuisance or a hazard is a container that the planning commission recommends be placed on large lots with some distance from the property lines with a number limit, a stacking limit, a size limit, a height limit, an occupancy conflict limit, requires a photo with the app, is painted the same color as the house, is strained with landscaping, and for all intents and purposes is not to be seen? Unfortunately, the commission's recommendations or such policies again is absent in the report. Only the threats. And how big are they? Based on the criteria of the proposed ordinance, it applies to two-tenths of 1% of the projected population and households. That's approximately two people per 1,000 residents or one household in 500.
Mr. Williams, that's your time.
May you give greater consideration to the alternatives. Thank you.
Before you go, Mr. Williams, those are excellent points and we felt the need to put this back on the agenda. And I don't know how it's going to go down tonight, but we have a real concern in several areas of our city where residents have violated existing ordinance, whether it be with the county or since we have incorporated, wherein people have put containers on less than five acres. Now, you, you've done it the right way. You have a five-acre spread. You have one container that's completely authorized under the code. We have others that have three acres and two acres that have three and four of these things. And so we, as a council, when we adopted the first 45-day urgency ordinance, felt that we needed a mechanism to be put in place to prevent future violations of code issues associated with this topic while we continue to debate and staff out an ordinance that will work for the public. So I... Do you have any comment on that?
Well, I do. Again, I have great admiration for this body and I know many of you and I have great respect for your principles and your integrity and your intentions. But I... Oh. I have great admiration for all of you and I appreciate those... I appreciate those. I appreciate those comments, but I believe it is penalizing those that are honorable. And it says to me that you don't have faith in your own code enforcement and therefore I'm penalized for it. And my other comment to you is that when there's a junker car, that you cite it and you tow it. But I don't see you banning cars in the city. So I believe that kind of...
So did I hear you say, if we're going to cite and tow a car, that we should cite and remove three illegal containers on a property less than five acres?
I would believe it should be enforced, yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear you say that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Next speaker, please.
Bengt Luotone. Thank you.
Good evening.
Could you please restate your name for the record so we get it accurate?
Yeah, my name is Bengt Luotone.
Okay, thank you.
B-E-N-G-T-L-U-O-T-O-N-E.
Thank you, sir.
Anyways, I'm sorry to be after this guy because I can speak quite elaborately, but I am all, of course, like last time, I am for the containers and if it's an eyesore, I'm sure we can fix that. And if there are more questions, because those guys, they pretty much said what I'm thinking about this matter. I can maybe answer some questions if there are any that would help go forward with this matter. But other than that, I don't have much more to say than what the speakers before me said.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have a question. We have a question from a council member for you. Mr. August?
Actually, no. I have talked to you on the telephone and I think I'll be calling you again too. But I want to ask a question to the staff. Because Mr. Williams was just sitting up here speaking and I respect him so much, I'm almost afraid to ask him a question. So I think I'll just go ahead and ask the staff this because of the moratorium. Once you get the recommendations from Mr. Denver and myself and we put them in your lap, how long to develop a staff report, put it to the public for a vote? What do you anticipate on something like that?
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Mr. August, thank you. That actually... That process can actually be very quick, although it does need to be noticed so that there's a new public hearing. So some of the things that we're facing is exactly what the mayor was discussing with Mr. Williams is there currently, the ordinance is a five-acre minimum for one container. And we know that there are places throughout the city that there are more than that with less acres. So currently, this actually extension, the moratorium, actually assists us, staff, in trying to create a program and a plan for how we're going to move forward once a decision's made based on the policy. Do we continue to enforce the Riverside County ordinance of five-acre minimums with one container? Then we have a lot of people to visit and a lot of information to get out so we can have those containers removed. If there's a change in policy, then we have to make sure that staff's directed to follow that policy, which would cause us to move into a different programmatic schematic.
One of my questions... One of my questions at the last meeting was, and I'm not sure if I asked it or not, was I do know we have that gentleman over here that I've also talked to on the phone that has five acres over in Tom's district and he wants to put one on. And I have a feeling he'll put a real nice one on and he's already said he would. But how many people are we holding up on these containers? I don't think we're holding up or affecting an awful lot of people with a moratorium would be my...
I don't know that we have that number. There's moratoriums, the applications that would come in would be on file. We'd have to look at the applications that are on file.
Was that one... Was that your point, Mr. Williams, to a certain degree? The fact that you're saying that you really don't approve of the moratorium because you think it penalizes people, is that because you think that there's a lot of people showing up wanting containers?
Sorry, we have to get your response on the record.
I just believe the planning commission's recommendations, which increase the standards, were appropriate. And to say that at this point you shut it down for a year is really penalizing some people. And by the way, there's not a lot of definition in this ordinance. I mean, I was at Lowe's last night. They have a shipping container. It says right on there, "Moving and Storage Metal Container," looks just like the ones there, kind of a more modest version. But you have no definition of height, length? Is it just shipping from an ocean cargo? Could it be a refrigerated car that's been sort of taken off? I mean, are you going to tell Lowe's to maybe pull it from their inventory and take it off the lot?
Well, again, I'm going to interject here because we're talking about an urgency ordinance. We're not debating the issue of how we're going to craft this. We're going to deal with that at another time, but we're definitely... It's not going to take 10 months to get done. There's a lot of commitment from the council and the staff to bring this back. And so just to kind of state that there's a difference between Lowe's, unfortunately, I mean, it's a business. It's a commercial business. And this particular ordinance does not address that.
Well, it says metal storage, I believe, shipping container. So is... It says moving and storage. Does that not qualify? Is it the size? Is it what it says it is?
I'm not debating that. If they're selling containers, they're selling containers, but this ordinance precludes from the law-abiding citizen who wants to put one in now at five acres or more and also precludes the others from running to market and adding another container on their already illegal property with containers, less than five acres. I mean, we have to apply it evenly.
However you define a container.
Yeah, exactly.
That'll be up to the staff.
All right. Mr. Furman, additional questions?
No.
One more, Mr. Williams.
Just a... No, no, not for Randy. This was basically to answer Grace's question. And in concurrence with Colin, there's roughly 300 containers in the city. Eighty of them are roughly old truck bodies. And I think the old truck bodies was our... Is our main problem.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any additional public commenters?
Yes.
Okay. How many... Just out of curiosity, how many more do we have?
This is the final one.
Okay, thank you.
Michael Mudd.
Thank you for hearing me, Mayor and council members. You mentioned that there is going to be, or you have, an ad hoc committee of two council members. May I suggest that you add into your ad hoc committee some of these individuals from the community that have these containers for their input to your ad hoc committee. This way, you're not working in a bubble. You're actually representing by listening to their concerns and suggestions in how you guys can move forward. This is beneficial to you and the community. That's my input. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Mr. August.
I'm not sure what the... Michael, I'm not sure what the protocols would be on that. But I can tell you, I've talked to each individuals that showed up here to speak except you. So I don't know if that helps you at all, but maybe we... The staff could... I don't think we invite people from the community to ad hoc meetings, right?
I think you're looking at me. No, ad hoc committee meetings are not necessarily open to the public. They're not closed. You can invite individuals if you choose to have them come before you. But the purpose of the ad hoc committee is to report back to the council in public session where the public can comment again, so...
It's okay for me to talk to the... Go out and survey the public, though, right? Yeah, anytime you... Yeah, anytime you want to talk to me, Michael, just...
It's a sensitive issue. I would open it up to workshops. There's lots of people that are going to be affected by this.
Understood. Okay. Next, Mr. Denver. You have your button on.
The purpose of the ad hoc committee is not to make final decisions. The purpose of the ad hoc committee is to break down the choices, the legal choices, the acreage. It's to elaborate and to condense things down. It's... After that's done, it's our intention to have public hearings, but we'll have choices It's, after that's done, it's our intention to have public hearings, but we'll have choices laid out. It's, it's not, it's not making decisions, it's focusing everybody down on, we hope to come up with three or four clear choices, which have been, some have been delineated and there's some others. And there's some legal issues, got, you know, the size, the shipping, that whole issue, the trailers, the age, the rusted, there's a thousand things. We need to work all that out, just technical stuff, and then we bring it to the world to make decisions.
Madam Clerk, do we have an additional speaker?
Yes, sir, I'm waiting on the speaker slip right now to give you the name.
Go ahead and Chief, would you, come on up, sir, state your name for the record.
Max Wilkie. From what I understand, and I don't have the exact facts, but Riverside County, because of opposition to the five acres, has since lowered that down to two and a half acre lots. And they since changed theirs to meet with public opinion and public needs so that they were more fair on people that own acreage that needed storage. And like the others have said, it keeps rodents out, keeps pests out, keeps a property cleaner because everything is stored away in a container. And, you know, there's no problem with painting them, beautifying them, or anything else. That's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I am aware that Riverside County changed their ordinance to accommodate code enforcement violators. Do we have additional speakers?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. I'm going to close this public hearing at time 9:12. We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
And this is an urgency ordinance, so it requires a four-fifths favorable vote. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver. Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye. On to, that concludes our public hearings for tonight. Agenda item 12.1, approve agreement with the County of Riverside Cal Fire for fire services for July 1, 2013 to June 30, 2016. Mr. Johnson, do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is an agreement for fire services for the next three years. It was a short staff report by Terry Willoughby, and she'll be providing that to you right now.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is a renewal of the original fire agreement, which was signed in 2009. July 7th of 2009, the original cooperative fire services agreement was approved by city council. That contract expires June 30th of 2013. The new contract is presented for council approval tonight, which will renew services for the period July 1st, 2013 to June 30th, 2016. There's no change in the level of services outlined in this agreement, it's merely a renewal of existing services through 2016. Exhibit A, the estimated city budget, which is the cost of the fire services for fiscal year 2013-14, is included as an attachment to your contract at an amount of $7,331,676. And this amount has been included in the proposed fiscal year 2013-14 budget, which will be coming forward to you shortly. With that, I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Edgerton.
The contract remains the same. Does the dollar amount remain the same? Are we going to be paying any more for fire services?
You will pay, the level of service remains the same, the dollar amount will be brought forward to you each year as part of the budget.
It will rise.
It will be different.
Different?
It might go down, I.
Could be up or down.
Could be up or down, correct. That will be brought forward in part of, as part of the budget process.
Just one other question. It's typical of fire and police, and rightly so, if I were representing fire police, I would want this. They like three or to five-year contracts. Cities and other agencies usually prefer a one-year contract. Through negotiations, that's rare. You generally end up with a three-year contract. And everybody gives something up and everybody gets something. In a nutshell, what, what advantage are we getting by going to three years as opposed to making it one year?
We could certainly, if it's council's desire, we could certainly request a one-year contract. Their typical term is three years, so that's what was presented.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Just to, are the collective bargaining agreement decisions that made by Cal Fire and the county, are those costs reflected in this three-year contract? In other words, is there going to be a year-over-year increase due to labor costs?
I've been working with Cal Fire staff on, as we did the presentation on their, on the PERS costs for our city. They're putting that analysis together and will be bringing those costs, any projected increases back to council at a later date.
Okay, then the amount of 7.3 million that's proposed for July 1. How, what percentage of an increase is that over this current fiscal year?
I believe it's about 3% from 2012-13 to 13-14.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions? Any additional staff or comments? And so what do we need here? A motion to approve the three-year contract agreement? Very well, council, do I have a motion? Okay, we'll call Mr. Denver with the first, with the motion, and Deputy Mayor Edgerton with the second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver. Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, since we just approved the fire contract, I better, I guess we better adopt the budget next. Agenda item 12.2, adopt resolution 13-327 approving the fiscal year 13-14 budget. Is there a very brief staff report? Are there any changes from the workshop?
There are no changes from the workshop.
Okay. Any questions of council?
Ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
So I'll move.
Second, please. It's been motion and second, roll call.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver. Deputy Mayor Edgerton. Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Agenda item 12.3, appoint, appointment of ad hoc committees for economic development for those reflected in the report. Mr. Johnson, do you have a brief staff report on this?
Yes, just a couple of brief comments, Mr. Mayor, members of council, if I could. This idea was actually discussed prior at an aquatics ad hoc committee meeting where we were discussing the benefits of working toward the Paris Menifee Valley Aquatic Center. And we were trying to look at the area of Romaland or the entranceway into the aquatic center and into the Big League Field of Dreams. And we're thinking about, you know, how can we make this entryway as part of our city, an opportunity for us to collect some sales tax from those people that are going into, into the aquatics park and Big League Field of Dreams? And it kind of morphed into, as specific development projects come up in these areas that are outlined here, the four separate areas, Sun City Romaland, Newport Road West and Han Road Corridor, Newport Road East Corridor, and Scott Road and Rural Development Area. That, specific projects come up, staff will be able to communicate the how, when, why, to what extent the projects moved from conception to application to actual approval. And from time to time, this will involve council members in these districts and a system to communicate the information back to council so that council can make policy decisions and direct staff in, in the way that, that you would have us provide service to, back to the community. And also, it's a great way for staff in the council to communicate a variety of specific infrastructure, retail, commercial, restaurant, and housing track projects affecting each of the areas. We don't anticipate regularly scheduled meetings, only meetings as the need arises. And tonight, we're requesting the mayor appoint members to these four ad hoc committees.
Thank you. This is one of those things that the mayor gets to do, and I think this is a fantastic idea. And I want to compliment the, the ad hoc committee for aquatics as well as the staff for coming up with this idea. Because there's been, I can recall several situations since we've been seated since December 4th that had we had some of these committees in place, it would have been good. It probably would have improved communication to applicants and staff before plan checks go. So for the, and this is going to be a thing that's going to, appointments that will go through the fiscal year and expire on June 30th of next year. If we find that it's not working, we'll just dissolve them. If we find that it's working, we'll continue them. That would be my goal. So for the Sun City Romaland Economic Development Ad hoc Committee, I am appointing Councilmember Denver and Councilmember August. For the Newport Road West and the Han Road Corridor Economic Development Committee, that's myself and Councilmember Furman. For the Newport Road East Corridor Economic Development Ad hoc, that will be Councilmember Denver and Deputy Mayor Edgerton. And for the Scott Road Rural Development Corridor Economic Development Ad hoc Committee, that'll be Deputy Mayor Edgerton and Councilmember Furman. And this is, since these are ad hocs, they don't require ratification of comment from Mr. Edgerton.
Yes, it's been, my understanding that in all cities that have district elections, that when you have ad hoc committees that deal with any kind of economic development or whatever that impacts a district. That management working with the ad hoc committee would also keep the councilperson of the district apprised of what's going on in his or her district at all times.
Yeah, that's a great point, and I think that's absolutely appropriate. And you'll notice that I took that into consideration on these appointments. The appointments were made based upon the corridors, but they also very closely resemble the districts. So that's a great point. Mr. Denver?
I also think this is a good idea. After coming back from this ICSC convention in Las Vegas, one of the things that we learned was that it was very difficult to get the individual businesses to come when there isn't any, any property for them to come to. You almost have to have it, almost have to have it built, and then the developer, then the brokers bring people to it. This is an opportunity for us on the council to take individual pieces of property, parentheses, especially in Romaland where that aquatic centers going in and Field of Dreams. And work and get the developers to come up with something that we can help them make it developable sooner. And that's a real, a really good idea. It's looking at the whole cake upside down or right side up, and we've been looking at it upside down. And so I'm, I'm kind of looking forward to this. Your idea also that if it doesn't work, kill it. If it does work, keep it on. That's, that's the most logical thing I've heard in a week.
Well, thank you very much, and colleagues, I appreciate your support on this agenda, and thank you very much. That concludes the balance of our action session. City Attorney, report.
I just have a couple of things. I am reminded this evening, and I had this on the agenda before this evening, but I'm reminded that I do owe the council a memo with regard to appropriate council discussion guidelines and such things in terms of what you, how you deal with your roles from the dais. And I will be putting that together. As part of that, I will be adding some information about concerns that some come, sometimes come up, having to do with dealing with developers and bias and various issues that are part and parcel of your role as you sit on the dais and present to the public. So that will be coming forth very shortly. We will also be coming back with the, with a, an ordinance and a recommendation for increase in the council compensation, probably at the next meeting or the meeting after that. Just to, to bring you back into alignment with the compensation that is permitted and encouraged under the statutes. There has been no increase for, since the city was formed, and you are allowed and encouraged to have increases. As you know, it's a very modest stipend that, in fact, you're awarded under the statute, and you can only have so much. And quite frankly, the position of mayor is limited by the initiative that has been adopted by the city, so that's even a further limitation.
Well, so I don't get a raise?
You don't get a raise.
Wow.
And you, none of you will get a raise while you're sitting in this term of office.
Good point.
Does this include the planning commissioners?
It does not include the planning commissioners, this is just for you guys.
In reference to Councilmember Furman's question, that's a, that's a policy decision by the council.
That's correct.
The stipends for commissioners, right?
That's correct. If you want to do something on that, you can direct us and we'll.
Okay.
Then the last thing is we are bringing the home occupation ordinance, and that will probably be on the 16th.
Of July?
Yes. And we'll just bring back an analysis of yours, a picture of what everybody else does in Riverside County. And then you can examine it, think about it, and tell us what you'd like us to do to change it or to keep it the way it is.
This is a, this is an ordinance of great importance to Mr. Furman and I both. Would it be, would it be helpful, could, could he sit down with you and articulate his ideas to, and get, have a dialogue with you? Because I don't, you know, I want to be fair, but I also don't want to unnecessarily, well, publicly embarrass a council member who may have great ideas, but they weren't really thoroughly staffed. And something might have been good, but you can't legally do it and vice versa. I would rather have that exchanged so that we have a good quality product that he's comfortable with the staff report. Would that be okay?
Sure, that's entirely fine.
Okay.
And, and it may be that some of the goals that Mr. Furman is looking for are not goals that the home occupation ordinance should address. It may be that there are other areas in the code that would fix that.
Okay, great. In reference to, I'm sorry, I'm full of questions, and I know it's getting late, but someone has to give a state of the city a speech in the morning. Mr. Johnson, I'm sick, you're going to have to give the speech. In reference to your first staff report for, would, would that presentation be best served at the joint council planning commissioner workshop?
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea.
So could we hold off on that?
Sure.
So that we can all hear that same information and we have clarity up and down the chain of command, as they say?
Sure.
Okay. All right, on to city manager reports. Thank you very much, Ms. Biggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a couple of items, then I have a couple of staff that are going to be entertaining you with some updates. Menifee Matters 2nd Edition is coming in the second week of July, so look for that. We also are working on the newest e-newsletter. We have several items coming up through staff, working on a staffing plan for city hall and a possible reorganization that I'd like to bring to council in the next 60 to 90 days to, to get input on, to see if that's the direction council would, would want to move in. So I'm pretty excited about that. Thank you for, for our budget allocation this evening, for next year. We'll work to make sure that we hopefully are able to keep our expenses in line and bring in some additional revenue with our sales tax and property tax. But I do have two updates, one on Leon Road, one on the Town Center, that Jonathan Smith will be providing you. And then he's going to hand it over to Carmen Cave, and she's going to give you a quick general plan update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Regents Town Center project across the street here, the public improvements are on schedule to be completed on July 3rd, including the paving of La Piedra and Sherman, followed by the completion of the school the week of September 1st. I was made aware today that Regents will be submitting a package to rename Sherman Road to Town Center Drive or whatever is a pleasure, council. Leon Road improvements from Keller to Scott, this project is currently being constructed by the county on behalf of the county and the city. Partly in the, improvements are partly in the city and the county. The project is on schedule to be completed by August. The project involves the reconstruction of Leon Road from Keller to Scott, which is approximately a mile. That ends my updates for these two projects. Carmen?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I do have a four-page PowerPoint for you on the general plan. Just to recap, the general plan budget and scope of work was approved by the city council in September of 2009. The elements before you are the elements that were included in the scope of work. And the scope of work also included the delivery of a monitoring and implementation plan, as well as the venerable and lengthy environmental impact report. The status of the work project to date, completed drafts, we have a housing element with our round four regional housing needs assessment, has conditional approval received by the state and the council. We have a draft safety element that has been reviewed internally by staff and is ready to present to the public. And we have a noise element that has been internally reviewed by staff and is ready for release to the public. Drafts that we will be receiving this month include the conservation and open space element. Those are typically two required elements, but they're being combined into one. Community design element, the economic development element, the land use element, the circulation element, staff has received a draft and provided comments on that, and the air quality element. Drafts to be received in August include the monitoring and implementation plan, which is driven by the environmental impact report. For public review, the housing element has completed public review, however, it will return with the entire general plan, NDIR. Upcoming public reviews, staff is contemplating an open house style rollout of the individual elements so that people can come and talk with a staff person and ask as many questions as they want about the element and not have to worry about a hearing type of presentation where you're limited to three minutes. If you're interested in each and every element, you'll have the opportunity to visit each and every element station. If you're only interested in one element, you would have the opportunity to just concentrate on that. We would have drafts available for public review. And then in August, September, depending on the rollout of the environmental impact report draft, all elements, the implementation and monitoring plan, the EIR, would be coming to public hearing before the planning commission. And with the planning commission recommendation, the entire package would be remanded to council. We're looking at doing a concurrent submission of those draft elements in the EIR to the Airport Land Use Commission, which we're required to do by law. They are telling us that they will take 60-plus days due to staffing limitations. So we want to make sure that as soon as we're ready to roll it out to the public, that we submit it to Airport Land Use so that we're not held up by another agency review of our plan. it to Airport Land Use, so that we're not held up by another agency review of our plan. We have met multiple times with the staff at the Airport Land Use Commission. We don't expect any conflicts with their plans, because we have contemplated the airport impact areas and making sure that we don't propose any land uses that would conflict with any of the flight paths for either March or the Paris Valley Airport. The housing element certification deadline is October 15th for Arena Round Four, so we're trying to accommodate that deadline in rolling it out. However, there are opportunities, and there are decisions that the council could make, including rolling over the round four housing needs assessment numbers into round five. That would mean that we have a little bit of discussion to talk about in terms of contemplation. There's also a discussion, I believe, with the city attorney about self-certification of the housing element, so while I'm being driven by a deadline, I want to make sure that all options are presented to the council, and that we're not trying to rush something through. However, just want to make sure that we're reviewing everything as thoroughly as we can, giving people plenty of opportunity to review the plan and accommodate any changes or modifications that the council would want between the draft EIR and the release of the final EIR and the final general plan document.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Yes, Ms. Cave, I don't think anybody's going to accuse of, of rushing the general The subsequent to the last election, it appears that would have to be public heat meeting, et cetera, et cetera, but I know discussions have been hell with staff about self-certification. So in anticipation that that is at least a possibility, and maybe even a probability of the wish of the council, how, how does that relate to what we're doing in round four? And whatever we do, we want to make sure we end up with a general plan and not hold it up in any way. But at the same time, if it turns out that the majority of the council wants self-certification, how do these mesh? Where are we? Is there anything we should be doing? And what should we make sure of that we don't slow this process down?
That will depend on what the council decides. I think really what you're looking at is the draft land map and the uses that are called out on that map. I understand that there has been some public concern about the density levels and the, and the categories of residential land use types at the direction of the council. If you so choose to reallocate, move, or eliminate certain types of densities, staff would then have to go back and revise documents based on that land map. We would go back and look to see if the EIR is affected. If you are moving from a higher density to a lower density, you're creating lesser impacts, so the changes to the AR may be limited versus going the other direction, where you would be taking lesser impacts and making them greater impacts. However, based on what I'm hearing, I don't think that that's a concern that I need to be aware of.
So after we get the general plan, I saw October, I thought we were going to be done with this in September.
I'm, October is the deadline for Rena. We're planning to roll out for hearing in August and September. Right now, we are budgeted for two meetings before Planning Commission, two before council, but if either body chooses to take longer or hold more hearings, that's when the schedule begins to change.
Is it conceivable that we end up with a general plan in September, and then in October 1, the council moves towards self-certification?
I would defer to the city attorney, since I am not expert in self-certification of housing elements.
While, while she's answering that, could you put up the last slide?
In terms of self-certification, that assumes that the housing element would not be approved by the Office of Planning and Research, and that you would then go through a series of steps to have that done. Till you actually complete the housing element, either through self-certification or through approval by the OPR, you don't have a general plan, because that piece has to be part of it, it's a mandatory element. You might certify it through the Department of OPR, and then later amend it to change it down, which would give you a general plan, and then a subsequent amendment that you could, in fact, process, that would result in self-certification.
So your, your assumption is that we'll probably, or possibly end up amending the general plan after it's passed?
If you're.
That, in other words, that is an option that we would have?
That is an option.
And how soon could we do that?
Well, you can do, I don't think there's any limitation after the initial adoption, other than the four times per year limitation. So you could do it after that, and that's, that's one option.
And the self-certification regarding housing, if you say that the state then certifies what we've already put in, we're fine. Some things came along, for example, I noticed we amended from the floor, we went from, or at least a portion of the council did, at least a majority, made a quick amendment and said, well, let's go from twenty to twenty-four units an acre. I don't think that same position would pass today on this council. So how do we take something like that into consideration as we try to get this thing through no later than September?
Well.
And, and, and in fact, if we're trying to get it through, would, 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 and that's hypothetical, let us say that the majority of the council felt that way, would we better, be better off just getting the thing done by September and then amending, and then amending it if that's what we want to do?
Those are the questions that you actually have to decide. Which is better? That's, that's for you to choose, because once you approve the housing element with whatever the densities are, you may have applications for development under that housing element. So that would be something that would be in process and would be an issue. I think I'd have to take a little bit more time to take a look at that for you.
Well, if you would, I, I don't think some of the council would be happy if we're, if, if some people move in quickly and take advantage of what we don't want to see happen, although it should be more simple based on what Carmen Cave just said, because I don't know of any, there's no majority on this council wants to go to higher density, they want to go lower density, because they're looking for higher quality, because we're trying to generate more revenue for this city and not have to have more police.
I think it, it might be appropriate, regardless of what is happening with the general plan in terms of timing and general plan hearings, to schedule on one of the agendas a discussion of self-certification and the consequences that come with it, so that the council as a body is aware of what the options are, what the consequences are if you choose to go in that route, and we can do that very quickly.
Well, I would, I would assume planning would recommend that to the city manager, and that they would take the initiative to tell us to get that done. So I'll, I'll, I'll anticipate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does that need a second, in accordance with our decorum policy? I'll, I'll second that, to bring back a, an agenda item on self-certification.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Johnson, I'm gonna, you must have something to say, and then I'll give it to Mr. Furman.
Oh, thank you, sir. I just wanted to follow up on what Deputy Mayor Edgerton was asking, that I believe what ended up happening is the housing element was submitted as part of the entire EIR, so as the EIR was actually in process, we recommended to council to basically throw everything in with the kitchen sink, and then when you got the general plan back, it's more easier to take out items at the end, so there's less of an impact, than there would be to take items, to open the EIR, take items out, and then unfortunately have items that impact the, the total EIR and cause an issue when the general plan is back. So you're going to have an opportunity, when the general plan comes back to you, to actually remove the items and to change densities to lower densities, if that's your wish. That's what our goal was for you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Furman?
The, we got a, we got an extension, and is it, is it possible for us to run over that extension date? Is there a penalty from the state for running over our extension date, or is there another extension we can get?
Mr. Mayor, we have exhausted our extensions. We have been in contact with the Office of Planning and Research. They are comfortable with as long as we are making progress, they have no concerns. However, we do run the risk of litigation for not having an adequate general plan adopted.
Do we have a drop-dead date at all, or?
We don't have a drop-dead date. The only date that we're chasing right now is the round four housing needs assessment, certification of a housing element by October 15th. If we don't have a certified element by that date, there are, again, not penalties from the state, we are open to litigation. We are possibly having to roll over the numbers from the round four and add them to the numbers that they have developed for us for round five, so that which makes a larger need to address for low and very low housing.
Who would possibly litigate?
Housing advocacy groups, attorneys that do this for a living so that they can make some money.
All right. Mr. Johnson?
Sorry, just one final comment. I, I think where Mr. Edgerton was going earlier is the, is the point that really we should be hitting home, that, that October 15th date is our, is our drop-dead date. We do have the housing element under consideration now, and using that and finalizing the general plan, and then have an opportunity to amend that if you wish to go through the self-certification. I think that's probably our best, quickest, safest route to go forward with.
Could you go to the previous slide? Okay, round four, we receive, help me understand what conditional approval for round four actually means, because i- if we have an approval, and if we have the ability to self-certify, why do we need to have another deadline of the 15th? On the next slide.
Um, the, okay. We submitted the draft housing element to the state for their review and comment. They have provided us with a letter that says, as written, pending approval of the environmental impact report that goes with it, the state would consider this compliant with state law.
Okay.
As it's written.
Is there an opportunity for us to self-certify without having to send it back to the state, or do we have to wait for the EIR before we self-certify? Assuming that's what the council wants to do.
Okay, it's like this. You, you've got approval waiting there. If you choose to reopen that, then you're going to have to resubmit.
Right.
To OPR. They're going to have to say, no, it doesn't comply, that takes a month, goes back and forth, it extends the time. Then you say, fine, we think it does comply with it, because you have to make those findings, and then you self-certify. You can do that. If, rather than doing that, you adopt the whole package with the approval of OPR as it is, then you can start the amendment process following that, and that at least gives you, validates everything, assuming that the rest of the plan is in order. You then have a general plan, which is an important factor.
Right, okay.
Okay?
That, that explains, it helps me understand and go where I think we, I was under the impression, and it may be something that was improper foundation on my part, but 30 September were at our five-year mark. Our, I was under the impression that we had some legal obligation to have our general plan in place by a time certain, and is that accurate or not accurate, or? Go ahead.
Yeah, it, it is accurate. You had thirty months from the date that you were certified as incorporated, which was October 1, and I don't know what thirty months is from there. It's whenever the, the date was, but it's, it's a while back.
Two and a half years.
Two and a half years.
Two and a half years.
So you have gotten extensions from that, and during that time, what the state, the position the state has taken, and that the city has taken, is that you don't have a general plan in place, although you've been operating under the county general plan, sort of. And so as a result, this date is particularly important, because you have not yet adopted your own general plan, and the position that everybody has taken is that you didn't really adopt the county general plan, because there was none that was discreet as to Menefee.
So if the council were to give direction to staff at this point to say, do everything you can to bring us back, made a timeline to get a general plan in place by 30 September, knowing that we would have to likely modify it, that would be one option to go, yes?
That's one option to go.
Because I'm concerned, number one, it's been far, far too long for this thing. Number two, as Ms. Cave suggested, we have limited funds that we authorize for two hearings at the commission, two hearings at the council. The public has an op, has to have an opportunity to see these things in the open house forum. Would there be a way, I know that we added, what, what are the absolute mandatory elements of the, of the general plan? There's seven, yes?
Yes.
And so which, which are the extra ones for us that we're adding?
Community design, economic development, and air quality.
Okay, so to expedite our plan, if we were to say to staff, let's get the general plan done with just the basic seven elements, do we have the opportunity in one of those four, four times a year to open it back up and add those later?
Well, you do regardless of whether you, whether you limit the, the action to the basics, or you do all of what, what you're planning to do. Either way.
In your opinion, do you think we can achieve all of those by the 30th of September?
That's what we're working toward. We are working toward August release to hearing.
Okay.
We're working toward it.
All right. Because we have 104 days left between tonight and 30 September, and I would like, I think, I think staff owes us, I would like to see a timeline. When are we going to have the open houses? What dates are those going to be? What dates are it going to the planning commission? Unless you're just saying that in August, it's going to go to the two planning commission dates, and in September, it's going to come to the two council. You know, I would like it, I would like date certain on this timeline. Is that something that you could present, give us another update at the next staff meeting of that?
Absolutely.
Okay, does that, can I get a second on that from the council?
I second it.
Okay, very good. Or is there any other discussion or questions of staff on this thing? On this general plan, this very important thing? All right, excellent. Thank you for working. Mr. Johnson?
Sorry, I just have one more item. Carmen and I were speaking today. As of July 2nd, under City Managers Reports, we'll have development application updates for councils, so you'll know what comes in the door, what types of applications we're getting, for what types of new construction are coming to the city.
All right. Does that conclude your city manager report?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. We're on to future agenda requests, and Councilmember Furman, I know I invoked a decorum rule on you. If you would like to address the reasons why you voted the way that you did, I think this would be another opportunity for you to do that, if you so chose to do. Otherwise, you know, we'll give it to somebody else.
No, that's fine. The, the reason being, there was about twelve or thirteen items there that I felt needed some work done on the, the rules and regulations of some of the, the permits.
Okay, I think at our six-month mark, we can, we can work, staff can work, and work on those. Mr. Denver?
I have several things I wanted to say. I would love to get a second, if I could, to inform the city about the increase in the population of Menefee on the signs, that our signs are, are behind, and it's, we are growing, and I'd like to, I don't think the cost is substantial, and if I, if I could get a second on that, I sure would love to have, have the signs updated.
I'll second it.
All right. Mr. Manders, do you have a comment about it first?
Yes, sir, that's actually part of our regular duties, we're behind on that, we apologize. There's no second needed, we need to get those addressed immediately.
All right, next.
Another, another issue is, we've spent an awful lot, or some amount of time today talking about sidewalks for kids getting to school so they don't get run over by cars. There's an elephant in the corner of the room, and I sure would like to see it addressed, and that is, is that the cars that the parents drop their kids off with are all over those roads, and the kids run across those roads, and it's a zoo. There are, I would like to see the staff come back with a report from, with consideration of the police, of what, and the schools, of what in the world can we do to fix those problems, particularly at that school that they're talking about building the sidewalk in front of? What, let me just give you the 10-second on it. The kids, somehow, nobody walks, hardly walks to school anymore. Parents drive their cars, and the schools never put a place for them to park, so they just double up, triple up, quadruple up, out onto the streets. The kids run across the road to their parents' cars, and when you're driving down there, you've got kids running in front of you and back of you. It's absurd. So I'd love to see if I could get a second to have a report at an appropriate time on what we might do, and the schools might do, the police might do. what we might do and the schools might do, the police might do, having to do those cars. It certainly is as important as the sidewalks.
I think, I think isn't the discussion, that might be a good topic for our safety meeting.
We agree. I just wanted to bring it up.
Good point.
Next thing is, once again, the things that I learned from that ICSC meeting was is that brokers are the key, commercial brokers are the key to developing your town. It was discussed at that meeting that we were going to have broker meetings. I would like to see one of those scheduled immediately, if you need to understand why. It's so that the local brokers can sit down and we can discuss, and the staff and the council can discuss the issues that we want to discuss with the development in our town. Let me tell you something. I have a user that came to my office, and he literally went to a commercial broker in our town, the commercial broker in our town, and they said, no, 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 you don't want to do that. You want to go to Marietta, and here's why. And they had all these properties, and oh, by the way, it turned out they got a little higher commission if they went to Marietta. But my point is, we got to work on that, and that's our problem. And so broker meetings would be useful, and so if we could have that, I appreciate, I think we could really do something.
I'll give you a second if you could, if you could work those, if staff and could work with the ad hoc committees to do it that way, because then it's by area, by region, because there is some sequencing issues associated with commercial property that comes online, you know? So, you know, I gave you a second if that's okay.
All right. Well, just point of order?
Yes.
You know, I support what Councilman Denver is trying to do. Of course, when you're talking about brokers, you're talking about a general broker, you talk about commercial brokers. Some of the more active brokers in the city of Menifee don't live in Menifee. There are a number of brokers. For example, down along Scott Road, that's Camp and Alley. I know who she is because my father delivered her when she was a little baby. And we have a number of brokers throughout the area. So I think it's a, I think it's a good idea, but we probably need to differentiate about which kind of brokers we're dealing with.
I was saying, commercial brokers. I'd like to announce that I'm going to not be here at the next meeting for the first time in I don't know how many, oh, five years, 10 years. I'm going on a vacation, going on a Rotary. My wife is, next year is president at Rotary, so we're going to Portugal, so I'll be gone. So don't do anything important at the next meeting.
Let's stack the deck.
I'd like to, last, and I promise I'll stop.
This is five.
I know. The last thing is, is that the corner of Menifee Road and Highway 74, that's just now being developed and how proud we are about that, that's a mess. I have no idea who designed that, but you need to take away all the lines and do like you did on Encanto and put another lane to the, going to the left. That's an absolute screw-up, mess, nightmare. Half that interchange has got slash lines where you can't drive across it. And here we're actually paying for something that's wrong. So I really, really would like, if I could get a second, to have staff go look at that and fix that darn thing.
Anyone? All right. Very good.
I'm down. Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right. Mr. August, you're up.
I'll try to make this quick, and I've already run this by staff, but I would like to get a second and get some port from someone on the council. I've asked city to look into caregiver status, whether the city wants to get involved in guidelines, licensing, permitting of caregivers, whether or not they want to be responsible for enforcement, control, or oversight of caregivers, or whether we want that to be run from the county. And the reason why I say that is because in my district and District One, we do have a little bit of a problem with underage people coming in and acting as caregivers. So do we need to permit, so can you look into that? I think, Julie, you probably already have that, and we're looking at legal for it. Do we want to fingerprint people? Do we want to register people? Do we want to have people come down and get permits for it, something like that?
Well, I think that's also an issue that the city manager has to address because there are costs and qualifications for people to do that. The statute, of course, was the initiative measure, and it set this up through the state and the counties. So there's no, everything is still kind of amorphous and undeveloped with regard to cities.
And I wouldn't guess the staff would want to take that on. That could be kind of an overwhelming, expensive, costly enterprise.
Well, and there's significant liability if we're not qualified.
But can we get it, can we check with the county to see if they?
Sure.
We've got to have some control over that. Okay.
Sure.
Did anybody support me on that?
Yes.
Okay.
The other elephant in the room on that issue is, is that Sun City has the highest proportion of sex offenders of any city in the world, I guess.
That's those old people.
And what it is, is that you can't get a job when you have a sex, you're in the database and you're on the computer, but you can come and work for some old person. And so not, a huge percentage of those people are sex offenders, and it needs to be worked out.
We, that needs to be addressed for sure as part of the review because that was an issue way back in 2010, and the Public Safety Committee at the time was addressing that because it was brought to our attention, and ABC Channel Seven News came out and did a spot right here in the parking lot, and it was also on the John and Ken Show on KFI. And so we never really peeled it back, and it's something that we need, I think it's a huge public safety issue. In addition to a business and a licensing issue and a certification process, we need to look at the whole scope of it. Mr. Edgerton?
Yeah, I hope we also keep our eye on those elderly folks. The staff had mentioned that they're working on the fact that we are legally and technically do raise sometimes, those are controversial items. I'll be more than happy to go out on point. I will push for that raise or legally do it. I'll spend every dime of it, and it will allow Councilman Denver to be able to take his trip to Portugal.
Right.
By the way, you should let him know how much we're going to get.
It's like $7, right?
Well, it's more than $7. It's another 100 bucks a month.
$3 a week.
Pay my mortgage.
Okay.
$33 a week.
Any other, any other comments of council before I talk about my two things? All right. In reference to the, first of all, congratulations, council, for approving, I mean, it was a very controversial and has been a very controversial issue for years, is the user fee schedule. But as part of this process, the city has never done a developer impact fee study either. So I'm looking for a second to have staff do a DIF study to bring back so we can adjust or reset our fees there. So, okay, we got a second. The other thing I'd like to ask a second on is, as we head into our, as we close on the end of our fifth year in existence, we've always had our council meetings on the first and third Tuesday, and I think that we need to explore a possible amendment to that or a change. I think there's been, and here's why, let me articulate my logic and then I can maybe get a second to at least bring it back for further discussion and exploring, is that we've had a lot of, we have a lot of Monday holidays and which, you know, then the last business day before a council meeting is a Friday. We, staff is on a 980 schedule, and that does pose some conflicts on Fridays and Mondays. Oftentimes, our meeting conflicts with some surrounding other public entities, and it also, in a lot of ways, especially with the Californian going away, we've got members of the press in here, and they have a challenge of covering the multiple public meetings that they have to cover too. So I looked at some things, and it looks like we might have an opportunity to make an adjustment. So I'm, all I'm asking for tonight is a second to bring that back as a future discussion item and see if we want to modify it.
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sunday mornings, I think.
Sunday mornings. I remember when we first started, you wanted the meetings to start at 4:00, like the school board, and then nobody would be here. Is it? That sounds like a good, did you say that? No. Okay. Well, I'm getting the nudge over here from the deputy mayor who says that maybe he should run the next meeting so that we can keep it under an hour.
I know it's not over at 8:00.
Yeah, well, I'm trying, it's 10:02, so I missed the, I missed the goal. If there's no other discussion items, this meeting is...
Could we possibly be discussing the change at a different night?
Yes, that is one option. Yeah, absolutely.
All right.